Report, we can say that we don't have one? Or, did we meet?
No, we didn't.
Okay, great.
No zoning subcommittee report.
Right, okay. So I assume there's no public comment for that? So that takes care of four. We can skip to, how about, could we go to item seven, number D? Chris included a letter from PVPC, which is a separate issue than if we talk about Pioneer Valley Planning Commission later under Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. Chris, did you have something to tell us about this letter that you included in our packet from PVPC?
It's a letter that we receive every year, and it goes to David Burgess, who's the principal assessor, and it is to let Mr. Burgess and other members of the town know that our assessment, and did I not include the assessment page?
Just this.
Okay, well, oh, I'm so sorry, because we were supposed to have a list of all the cities and towns that are included in the PVPC. There are 43 of them, and that list shows what their assessments are. So I can get you that list if you're interested, but Amherst's assessment is around $6,500 a year, and some assessments are higher than that and some are lower, but if you're really interested.
Could you email that to us?
I will email it to you, yep.
Great. All right. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, it looks like we're 7:05, so with that, we can go back to the first public hearing. I'll read the preamble and open the public hearing. In accordance with the, yeah, make sure I'm reading the right part. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR 2019-08 Javier Campos of Adams and Ruxton for Bank of America at 360 College Street. So SP, it's the request for site plan review approval to install new light posts and fixtures to provide better illumination, safety, and security for Bank of America ATM. It's in a commercial zoning district, map 15A parcel 28. First, I need to ask, are there any board member disclosures? No, that's good. Okay, so the next item would be the applicant's presentation. Welcome. If you can just make sure your mic's on, or, yeah, Chris is coming, or, it's, yeah, she'll show you.
There you go. So, good evening. My name is Javier Campos. I'm a project manager for Adams and Ruxton Construction Company. We are general contractors that work for Bank of America, and I'm also a PM, project manager, who's going to be working on the project that we'll be discussing shortly. So basically, a brief description, Bank of America has what they call an ELP, Exterior Lighting Program, where they basically go around their sites, and they survey their sites and determine whether or not a site is in need of additional lighting, again, as you stated, for the safety and security of the customers. And they deemed this site over at 360 College Street, it needed improvements, so basically we want to add additional lighting on the exterior attached to the little strip mall where it's at, and add two additional light posts in the parking area. So I'm here to, I mean, I think I submitted both drawings, engineered drawings, showing the location of the light fixtures, as well as cut sheets of each individual light fixture for you to review. So obviously, we hope to proceed with this work.
Could you give us a little bit of detail about how the design, we, we'll get into the site visit next, but we did notice some work had happened already, and, yeah.
Yep. So, I mean, the most, basically, all the work is electrical work, addition, adding, you know, light fixtures to the building and the light posts. So our electrical subcontractor went ahead and pulled an electric permit and received it. So we kind of mistakenly thought that that's all we needed. Obviously, that, you know, building inspector went by and told us to, you know, stop the work, and that we needed to apply and, you know, for review first, so that's what, that's what we did. And, you know, obviously, we immediately stopped, and we haven't worked there since, but of course, we'd like to continue. The, I'm sorry, so the light poles originally were 25 feet tall. We had a little pre-review of this with Christine over here, and she suggested dropping them to 15 feet, which the latest drawings called for, so we did that, and while still attaining the lighting lumens that the bank is looking for, so.
Did you email those to us? Oh, I'm so sorry.
With my application, I thought it all went with my application to you guys.
You sent it to whom? To me?
To, oh gosh, I'm sorry, I'm blanking out.
Did you send it to Pam?
Right. I think I did, right?
I think I forwarded everything today.
No, no, this is when I originally sent my application, in, you know, a few weeks back.
Oh, that's all these, Chris. This is what I sent.
Right.
But I don't remember receiving any updates.
There should be any updates.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if you look at, for example, at the LU2, where it's, where it shows the light fixture schedule, it does show a height of 15 feet. So if that's not what you have, then I apologize, but that's.
It is, it is what we have.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the latest and greatest, as they say, of the engineer drawings for this site.
Right. That was enlightening. Is, do you want to open the questions, or can I do the site visit first? Okay. So before we open up to questions from the board, we're just going to talk about the site visit that happened today. I believe all five of us were there at the site visit. Chris, there's no site visit report. Right, okay. So do one of you all want to give a summary? Michael?
Sure. We observed the area under consideration and looked at the existing lights under the overhang that exists on the three storefront, business fronts. We noticed the pole, the yellow bollards, which are in position to serve as the basis for the new lights that you're proposing. And we noticed on the pole at the corner of Southeast Street and College Street, an existing lighting fixture, a downcast lighting fixture, and wondered about that, whether it was operable, and whether or not it was part of the plan that you were proposing. And that's about, about it, I think.
It definitely, it's not part of our plans, not shown on the drawings, so that's an existing fixture that was already there, and.
Is that lighting fixture operable? Does it currently work?
I don't know the answer to that.
Wouldn't that impinge on whether or not this lighting proposal is necessary?
I would have to get the engineer and ask the question, sir. You know, they go out and they, you know, come with their photometric instruments, and basically, they decide what, if it doesn't meet Bank of America's standards as far as lumens, then they keep adding. But whether that light fixture was on or not at the time they were there, I don't know the answer to that. I could certainly find out, or even, you know, go after this meeting and take a picture or see if it's on or not.
I think part of the issue is, it's there, so you're, you know, you're, of course, you can upgrade your lighting, that's great, but you'd also, we would be wondering, so is that going to stay? Is that going to be, you know, taken away, or?
It is not part of the scope, I can tell you that, but again, I can find out.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
So if, does anyone else have anything to add to the site visit before we move on? Okay. So at this point, I will open questions to the board, and then after that, I'll open it to public comment. Okay, so you want to start, Michael?
Yeah, is the 15-foot proposal, proposed height on top of the existing three-foot standard, or is that a total?
That's a total.
That's the total height of the lighting fixture itself?
Correct, so the head of the light fixture on top of the pole will be at 15 feet.
Thank you.
Yep.
At 15 feet, not 25 feet?
Correct, 15, yes, sir.
Yeah. We did notice that across the street, that was what appeared to sort of be in the Florence Savings Bank parking lots. Anyone else have a question? Janet?
Have there been safety problems at that site, at the ATM? Like, what problem are you trying to solve?
It's, it does not, it doesn't have to have a problem, just if the bank, their engineers, you know, they have a certain amount of lighting that they require per bank, and if it doesn't have that, then they add additional lighting. It doesn't mean that, that there's been problems or issues at all, but they just like to keep a certain amount of light outside all their ATMs and banks of lumens.
David?
Who owns the property, and does Bank of America have the right to plant these light poles?
Of course, so it is not a bank-owned property, but obviously, they go through their, the landlord and make sure that it's okay, and we have received, or they have received permission to do this work, and I'd be happy to give you, you know, confirmation of that if that's all you need.
I just want to clarify something. So I'm looking at the specs that were given to us, and I think some of the confusion came from on the back page. The red box says 25-foot pole.
You know what, that may be the old one, yes.
And I think that's where, because I'm, like, how did this, so, so looking at the new, when I look in the details, it says 15 feet. That's total feet.
Correct.
And how high are the bases right now?
They're about approximately three feet high.
Approximately three, and so you would just put on a pole?
Another 12. 12 feet until that, yeah, for the post is.
Okay, so that's good. Any more questions?
About the bases, which are quite large and bulky, is there a way to make them more attractive than bright yellow, large concrete, like bollards or some kind of planting? I also noticed that one on the east side seemed very close to the pull-in, and I wondered if people would just hit it. And actually, now that you are talking about not, I'm wondering if you could just solve your lighting and safety problem just by the lights on the building, like on the ceiling of the building, just to make it less unattractive.
The question was asked, and they, I mean, the engineer, GMR, who designed this, just could not get the adequate amount of lighting that the bank requires just solely on fixtures attached to the building. I mean, they're, in addition to the two poles, they're adding three more as well to the building, and it just, they couldn't get the minimum amount of lumens required per bank standards that they have to comply to, yeah.
Okay. Michael?
You say the bank requires, don't you mean the bank prefers, or suggests, or recommends? It is not in their position, not in their purview to require a level of lighting. It's our responsibility to do that.
Yeah, I mean, the bank has, does have minimum standards, and that's what they prefer. I mean, obviously, you know, they have, they have branches everywhere, and, I mean, they'd like to keep it uniform throughout.
Are those standards in place at the Triangle Street bank location?
My assumption is yes, but I'm not familiar with that location.
So these, this new lighting system that you're proposing on College Street will be the equal in terms of the output of light as the one on Triangle Street?
I'm not familiar with Triangle Street. It's, I mean, the output of lighting is shown in one of the drawings over here as far as the amount of lumens, so, again, we, I don't, not familiar with that site.
Go ahead, David.
Is the purpose of the Bank of America ELP program to more brightly illuminate Bank of America storefronts? And will, and a related question, is, will this corner now be brighter than all the other corners at this fairly busy for this, you know, small town, at this intersection? So will this, what will be the net effect of brightening the skies with these lights?
It's mostly for the, they say it's safe for the safety and security of their customers. Well, is it going to be brighter than what's out there? Without me taking a reading on the, in the surrounding areas, I can't say.
Jack?
Is the lighting to be on like 24, or not 24/7, but from dusk till dawn sort of thing?
Correct, yes.
David?
Is there any way to mitigate the light bleed pollution that will, that will result?
Yeah, I mean, all the new fixtures are, you know, full cutoff, you know, dark skies, you know, friendly compliant fixtures.
I think I read on the specs here that the Kelvins, you're going with, is it 40K? You're 4,000K? It's hard to tell, you know, because you have the 3,000, 4,000, and 5,700. At the top of the chart, it does say 40K, which is a mid-range. It's not a blue-white, and it's not a warm, but I just wanted to confirm that.
So this, these contents were given by the designer, and you're talking about the red writing, it does say 40K, so that's, that's what we would install.
So it would be 40. Is that a Bank of America standard, or are they open to possibly doing 3,000?
I could ask a question, I might, you know.
I would appreciate if you could ask that question. It's a warmer light, it's, it's less harsh, and where people are concerned about light spray, that does soften it quite a bit. Anyone else have a, Chris?
If they do decide to leave the bases there, and you decide to let them leave the bases, is there some other color that they could use besides yellow?
Well, I don't, issue I have, I want to go back to Janet's point, where if we look at the map, if you look at LU3, and it has where you've already poured the bases, and they flank each of the driveways. Being at the site visit today, you know, I, with some of my transportation background and parking spaces, I was like, that's tight, and the handicap spots there, was there consideration in the design to move the right-hand one, the one to the east, further to the east, to be on the other side of the driveway where there's no spaces and it could be tucked over? Now, I don't know how far it could be pushed over, but you'd have to run your photovoltaic modeling again, and if you were doing that, I would be interested in knowing if you could push the pole that is on the left and move that further west to the other side of the driveway, and if that modeling could be done with the 15-foot height, would that give you enough lumens to cover the site that would need?
Yeah, the designer would have to run all those.
And you could cut the bases and just pour them? So that would be an option to be explored?
Sure, I can definitely explore it. I will ask a question.
Anyone have any other comments on that?
When you're doing that, can you see about that extra light, to see if that's on and things like that, and just maybe bring some alternative bases that kind of fit the area better?
Well, that's a good point. That made me think that the reason why these were so high was because if you just put the metal pole and that gets hit, you're going to, they're going to break, because they're very fragile. But if you could move the bases and spread them further, there's a much lower chance of them getting hit, and then the bases could be lower, and you can still adjust your pole to be 15. Good point. So then they, we wouldn't have to worry about them being big yellow tubes. Any other comments on this?
Question?
Yeah.
Could you, I understand how the HT1 poles are mounted. Can you explain how the SK1 lighting and the SH1 lighting fixtures are attached to the building?
Yeah, basically, they're just attached to the exterior wall.
Exterior wall, not to the overhang?
Not to the overhang, to the exterior wall. Well.
They appear to be attached to the overhang.
You know what, that's, you're correct.
They are attached to the overhang. At what level are they attached?
Okay, so they are, if you go back to LU2, it'll, it'll tell you the level of each one, and they appear to be at, the SKs are about 14 feet above finished ground.
14 feet above? That means they're higher than the building itself. Is that correct? How are they, how are they mounted on the building?
You know, sir, when, when I saw this, I just assumed that they were attached to the wall. I, I did not see that 14 feet, so I would have to question that.
Or, you know, there's an under part of the building that you say you're removing those lights.
Yes.
These, you know, at that point, they must be on the, the overhang of the building, the flush part. Yeah, that would be, we didn't get a front pitch, you know, we're only looking at flat, so that's a good point, so.
And would those also be on from dusk till dawn?
Yes.
There, is there, there's no way that any of these lights could be motion sensor, or, I mean, for the safety and security, because otherwise, it just seems to be, to be a means to illuminate what's there?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, any light can have a motion sensor. I could ask a question of whether those would be acceptable to use at that location.
Chris?
I would just like to bring up the topic of this area being considered a village center, or at least a budding village center, and that there should be consideration for this to become a pedestrian area with a nice streetscape. So whatever is put here should be in keeping with that idea, because I think other things that are happening in this location are tending towards that type of image and character. So that's just a thought for you to consider as you're reviewing this project.
Chris, I know we don't have a standard right now that we're following for street lights. There's a trend towards one, the certain light that we used at Atkins, and we've used on the northern end of town. Do you feel, and it is proposed in the southeast development across the street from this, yeah?
So I'm really not talking about the style of light? I'm really talking about the same thing that Mr. Levinstein was talking about, the brightness of this location. When you're thinking of a streetscape that is comfortable for people to walk in and to, you know, want to go to to have, you know, some, I don't know what, meal, or go to a store or something like that, that kind of bright, you know, sort of shopping center-like lighting system is not conducive to feeling like you want to go to a place and like it is a village center, so just something to consider.
So it sounds like, at this point, they need to go back and reexamine and potentially redesign what we have on our documentation here. So is the general consensus that we should, you know, continue this at another meeting, and they can come back with their, their new information? Is everyone in agreement with that? I think you have enough takeaways from this.
Yep, I know what to do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we have, yeah.
Are you going to vote to continue it to a date certain?
Yes, exactly. So we need to hear a motion that, do we have to have a date? Any suggestions?
I think the next date that I'm sure that we will have people available would be the 18th of September.
And that, and so the, the new documentation will be created, it's emailed to you, and then you'll get it to us, and then we would see you on the 18th. Does that sound all right? Okay? So I need a motion.
I move to continue the hearing until September 18th at 7:05.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on that? We good? Okay.
I think there's someone in the audience.
Oh.
Maybe a comment.
We can, we, so I can take a public comment right now, too. Sorry. So if there's someone who wants to speak to it, you can come up to the microphone, and please give your name and your address, and you can address. Thank you.
So, Vince O'Connor, 175 Summer Street, Amherst. And my comment is I was the sponsor of telling you, well, general by the article, a dark sky by law, two and seven time periods, eliminating certain types of lighting and controlling other types of lighting.
Hold on, can you push the button right in front of you, Vince, to turn on the, yeah, he'll know, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
And, so my concern is that there not be any lighting on this side or any other sites that shines in the upward direction. No, no lights that are on the ground that shine up, no lights that are on the wall that shine up, and that, the lighting that is proposed, I mean, you can see example of a, of a good intentions, but bad outcome at the People's Bank at the corner of South Prospect and Anamity Street, where technically, they, the lighting may be proper, but in fact, the lights on that site shine into the second floor windows of all the surrounding residential properties. So I think it's important that, that in addition to having the lights be cut off, that the, the fixture that emits the light not be visible from off-site, so that it's much more efficient to have a fixture that directs all the light in the downward direction on the areas that you want lit up. And having, having the light shine off the property is a waste of both energy, and it's an annoyance to the abutters. And that also can be seen at the, if you want to see an example of that, you can go to Long Meadow Drive to the Affordable Housing Property, which is an annoyance both to the residents and to the abutters, because the lights are not, they shine in the second floor windows of all the surrounding properties and the residents, the properties of the residents who live there. So I think it's, it is important that not just having cut-off fixtures, but fixtures that make sure that the light is focused in the downward direction and is not, and the, and the source of the illumination is not visible from off the site.
I believe what you're asking for is you like shielded lights.
Yeah, yes, that's correct, and I think it's important that we start doing this. And when somebody comes in with proposing to add fixtures and leave others in place, I would urge the planning board to say, yes, we'll let you have new fixtures if they're appropriate and proper, but we want, but if they're existing fixtures that are problematic, that the board condition the new. that the board condition the new, the approval of the new fixtures on removal of certain older fixtures that, that really violate the, the board's lighting standards. And I think that's, it's a reasonable condition. I think that it's a way to begin things, although a general bylaw that would cover the entire town within a reasonable period of time, I think is what we should be looking for. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think you were heard by, and so please, you know, consider that. So are there any other public comments to this? I don't see any other comments on the board? Okay, well, all in favor of continuing this, following the motion the eighteenth? All in favor, say aye. Okay, great, unanimous. Thank you, and we'll see you on the eighteenth. Okay, so... Next public hearing for a site plan review is, in accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR two thousand nineteen zero seven and SPP two thousand nineteen zero four, Amir, I forgot how to say this, Amici? Mitche, thank you. Southeast Street Court Housing, one thirty-three and one forty-three Southeast Street. This is a joint public hearing to request a site plan review approval to construct a new three-story mixed-use building with sixty-two apartment units, one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight square feet of retail space and associated site improvements and work in the town right-of-way. Undersections three point three two five of the zoning bylaw and request a special permit to modify the front and side setback requirements under footnote A of Table Three, Section Six of the zoning bylaw, B V C zoning district, map fifteen C parcel three and four. Okay, and you all are settling in, great. First off, any board disclosures? I see none. So we'll move on to the applicant's presentation. If you could introduce yourselves and, and then proceed.
Yes, my name is Amir Mikchi, and I'm the owner of this project, one thirty-three. I have to push this?
Is it?
Oh, okay. My name is Amir Mikchi, the owner of the one thirty-three, one forty-three Southeast Street, and the application for the sixty-four, sixty-two units and two retail space in, at that location. And I have Mike Liu, who can explain the whole project. And Mr. Roy Brown, who is the architect of the project.
Great. If you could both introduce yourselves.
Sure. Michael Liu with the Berkshire Design Group, I'm the landscape architect and designer for the project.
Roy Brown, architect, Will Brim.
I'll start? Okay. So this project is at the, along Southeast Street. I wonder if I can use this as a, I'm trying to figure out if I have a pointer here. Oops, I guess not. Highlighted on the screen in red are the two parcels. Currently, there are two residential units on the property. I think one is vacated. And is there, oh, okay, both are vacated now. Combined, the site is just over one and a quarter acre. As you can see from the aerial photo, it's basically the house's front on Southeast Street. There's a very wide right-of-way on Southeast Street, and then the back portion of the properties are basically currently just lawn space for the two units. The proposal is for this L-shaped apartment building. It's a three-story building. Roy Brown can talk about that, or if you have any questions about the building. There's, again, three stories with sixty-two residential units. There are two retail spaces on the ground floor totaling, well, each of them about twelve hundred square feet. The parking, as you can see, comes off of Southeast Street and comes into a parking lot. So most of the parking is going to be hidden from the streetscape. The building is proposed to be pushed up very close to the property line. We're asking for a six-foot setback on the front street line. The setback is a ten-foot minimum to twenty-foot maximum. It is shown by the red, a parallel red dash line that goes around on the inside perimeter of the property. It's a, it's a tight site and it's very, I'm going to say it's very efficiently used. There is an isolated wetland in the center part of the site. We are proposing replication of that wetland at, I think it was a four-to-one ratio? A four-to-one ratio at the southwest corner, which is the low point of the site. It's highlighted by the, kind of like the blue background coloring down to the south of the parking area. There's a couple of bike racks proposed at the entry of the building, which is at the crook of the L. There's an arrival plaza there, that's the main entry to the building for residents. Additionally, there's an entry opposite at the Southeast Street side. And I'll talk about some of the work in the right-of-way there. But the, there's a door to the, at the northeast side of the building, which will get you access to Southeast, to the sidewalk on Southeast Street. Now, the proposed improvements in the roadway include road widening of the actual physical road itself that was requested by the town. As you know, some of the road was widened from basically the, the curb cut to the Florence Bank parcel, just to the north, to the intersection of College Street. So this project is also proposing to widen the street down to the bottom where, you know, the end of the rendering is shown, south of the entry. It also includes a bus stop, shown where that large red vehicle is shown in the roadway. I asked for that to be blue, but somehow it turned out to be red. But there's a bus stop. The sidewalk would be redone from, from the curb cut to the Florence Bank parcel, which you can just see at the top of the rendering, all the way down to the new driveway to the project. There's a semi-circular pedestrian plaza outside of where the retail space is, and also between the building and the bus stop, with a walkway connection down to the bus stop. So we can envision that, you know, I don't know what the retail is going to be ultimately, but potentially it might be some type of coffee shop or a convenience store or, or combination or something like that. This space would also serve as perhaps an open space gathering location for the residents of the, the building, seeing that there's kind of minimal green space or usable space around on the backside of the building, if you will. So there's a, a series of sidewalks that connect from the building to the, to the street sidewalk and green lawn space, which would be regraded and reseeded and smoothed out. As you know, right now, the, the drainage comes off the street and kind of just sits in that, in that green space right now and pretty much pools and infiltrates, you know, to the best ability it can. We've gotten conservation approval already on this layout with the drainage system. It's been reviewed by the town engineer. And we've gotten an order of conditions on this project that was granted, I think, in the spring, was that June? No, or May or something of this, this, this year. This is a couple of months ago. The only drainage we're proposing in the street, which was discussed with the town and the town engineer, is that at the bus stop area, it's a low point to the south of the site, approximately where the entrance drive enters the project. There's a high point and there's a slow, very gentle grade back to the north. So catching water approximately where the bus is indicated on the plan, we're proposing just a catch basin in the road and a piped, with a outlet pipe back to an existing catch basin that's in the green space in the right-of-way to the north. And that continues outlets and connects to the drain system, which, you know, heads up to College, College Street. I've gotten a verbal approval from Jason Skiles about, for that simplified system, and I know that, I don't think he's provided a memo or anything to the board. And you might be seeking, you know, verbal or a, a written approval on that. I guess I'm, unless there's any other questions, I'm going to, if you let, Roy, do you want to say anything about the building? I'm going to continue and just flip through this to show you the, oops, oops, wrong way. That's the style of the building. The up, the elevation to the top is from Southeast Street. The, the retail locations are shown by the green awnings. So right outside of that space would be the semi-circular gathering space, and then continuing on to Southeast Street. The bottom elevation is the backside of the building, looking, is that looking east? Is that right? And then similarly, oops, going the wrong way. Other, other elevations, the top one looking south. So that would be the facade that would be facing the Florence Bank property, and then the other, the bot, oh, did I get that backwards? Okay, sorry. And then the...
South is from the driveway and north is from the Florence Bank.
Okay, all right. So that's the style of the building. And I guess I'll conclude right there and then open it up to comments and questions, which I'm sure you'll have. Oh, there's, I think there's one more. I'm going the wrong way. We did prepare, have a lighting plan prepared, and obviously, it's a little bit small, but you can see the lighting locations, which are basically centered in those, in those, I think those are one-foot candle blobs. But the, the style of the lighting is shown there. We try to mimic the new standard that's being used in town. I think it's in two locations. The one I'm familiar with is the new roundabout at Triangle Street. And there's also a couple of lights along Southeast Street, which you can see, it's not shown, you can't see Southeast Street, but to the right of the building, one at the bus stop to the north and one at the entry drive. So realizing that these are going to be in the right-of-way, we tried to, Amir was agreeable to choosing this style, which would match the, the town standard.
Thank you. That's it for the presentation, okay. So the next thing we would move on to is, there was a site visit today, all five of us here attended. Chris, I assume there is no site visit report? Okay. So if one of you would be willing to give a summary of what we saw today?
I feel you're so good at them. The, excuse me. The group noticed the large common area in front of the proposed project, including some existing vegetation, particularly the large Catalpa tree, which is in some sort of questionable state of health. It seems to be wired up significantly. On the other hand, it seems to be quite present as a, as a visual statement, and the leaves and, and the flowering of the tree seems to be very healthy. We noticed the two buildings referred to that are existing on the property in, in somewhat questionable repair. Noticed the large area in the back. Noticed where the flood plant, where the low water, low area where water will collect in the spring exists. And thought about issues of the slope of the landscape, particularly as it relates to the street and the slope downward toward the buildings and then the slightly raised platform on which the building is proposed. And thought about how much fill would be necessary to complete the project as proposed. Noticed the fence that exists between the property and Florence Bank property. Noticed the proximity of the Amherst College land on the south and west side. And that's about it, I think. Anything else that we want to think about?
Anything else to add? Thank you, Michael. So the next, we'll open it up to the board. I just wanted to, before we open up to questions, I wanted to ask, Chris, if you could update us on the status of the tree? We had opened this before as a public hea, and it ended because we weren't sure about the tree. Do you have an update? I heard there's a meeting coming or something.
I spoke with the town manager about the tree issue. The board, the planning board did hold a public hearing on April seventeenth, and one of the residents of town brought in a letter of opposition to the tree removal. So the public hearing that the planning board was holding with the tree warden pretty much stopped at that point, and the planning board closed the public hearing expecting that the decision on the trees would go up to town council. But after consulting with the town manager and the attorney, the town attorney, it's been determined that the decision really needs to go to the town manager rather than town council. So what we've been advised to do by the town attorney is for the planning board and the tree warden to go ahead and hold a, a second public hearing with the introduction of the letter of opposition during that public hearing. It's already been introduced, so we'll just reintroduce it. And then the planning board needs to make a decision on whether it agrees that the trees can come down, and the tree warden needs to state his position on whether the trees should come down. And then the planning board can close the public hearing. And given the fact that a letter of opposition has been submitted, state law says it must go to the, the executive in town, who is the town manager. So after that, the town manager would make the final decision about whether the trees would come down or not. Does that help?
Yeah, any questions on that, anyone? We understand, okay. Thank you. So at this point, I'll open it up to questions on the board, general questions, and then we'll start to go through our checklist and get specific. Does anyone want to start? I saw David first and then you're next. David?
On the architectural drawings, how, how tall is the, the full height of the building? The third floor looks like went to thirty-two feet, but including the roof and the fencing structure on top? And if you don't know, that's fair, but, but if you could approximate, it would be great.
Approximately, let's see...
Do you use the microphones?
Yeah.
Sorry. First floor, I think, is about eleven. I think the next floor is ten foot six. And then the next floor is ten foot six, and then it pitches up to the roof. So you have about, maybe about forty feet, plus the, the guard fence at the top, the widow's walk. Approximately forty feet.
That's including the fence on the top or not, just the structure?
Plus, plus the fence on the top, that'll be forty-two inches, but that's an open, open rail fence.
Michael, do you have?
That was basically the question I was having. The, the fence at the top is only a two-foot-high fence?
No, no, no. What I, what I said was a forty-two-inch fence. So I'm, I'm saying approximately forty feet to the flat piece of the roof and then a forty-two-inch-high fence.
Chris, is there a way we can confirm that height? Is that written anywhere on one of our applications?
Your building height, I think, is to the... Your building height, I think, is to the average of a sloped portion, isn't it? And I thought I, it's a pro- I measured it, but I didn't have an exact height. I'm coming up with 37 feet to the midpoint of the slope.
That's the, on your drawing, L2, the site drawing, L2, that is the height that was listed. And that goes up to the midpoint of the slope. That's how the planning, excuse me, how the zoning bylaw measures the height of the building.
That's also how the building code measures buildings.
37 feet to the midpoint.
Did you say it was on L2?
L2 over to the left.
There was a little, there was a zoning table on the illustrative site plan.
Thanks. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Janet?
Hi, I have some questions. So could you just tell me about the size of the apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom? What, who you expect to be renting, price of, rental prices? What market are you looking for and expecting?
They're all one-bedroom apartment. And roughly they're 595 square feet. And it is intended for young professional, basically, because I used to teach at UMass sometime, long time ago. And I had friends who used to come from Boston and they were looking for a place to live. And that is basically, that is where I got the idea that, you know, I would have a place that I could accommodate these people that are coming, that they want to know, nice, simple, clean place, that they're from the crowd. And that was basically it. And for the rent, I don't know, I mean, I have to talk to, we haven't finalized it. I'm thinking about in the vicinity of 1,200 to 1,300.
So 1,200?
1,200 to 1,300.
And could they be students, undergraduate students, or?
Of course, we cannot discriminate. If they apply, you know, and they can. But my intention was for the young professional who want just single space. But it is available to anyone.
Can there be an occupancy of two people in a one-bedroom? Or is there, like, one or two people?
Sure.
Yeah.
It also might be married couples.
Right. But two would be the max in a-
Yeah, it's only one bedroom, yeah.
Any other questions? Michael?
I assume none of these units are designated as affordable housing units. Did you give it any thought to the possibility of having affordable housing units in this building? You did not give any thought to that?
Speak in the mic, please.
No. Do you have any idea what the economic impact of having those affordable units would have been on the total project? I.e., could you have built the project, could you build the project if there were affordable units in it?
I never considered, so I never, because I was asking my bank to see what they would do, but I never considered, definitely I would look into it if I have to. But I don't think that would stop me not to go ahead with the project.
Chris, is there someone on staff who could potentially talk to him about the options of that?
We have discussed that option. It's not a requirement. And so Mr. McChee has chosen not to include affordable units because it's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement because of the fact that there is, it is a mixed-use building. Is that correct?
Correct. There's no special permit required for the use. There's only a special permit required for a dimensional modification, which is a setback, which is not one of the threshold items that's listed in the zoning bylaw.
Well, it would be nice if you could reconsider.
Sure.
Any other questions here, concerns? Jack?
Mike, do you want to restate the reason for the reduced setback that you're seeking? We talked about that, I believe, in the site.
It's kind of a, well, I don't know the total history, but when Amir was talking to the building commissioner about this project, it was actually suggested to build a zero setback project. I advised Amir that we should have some space between the foundation and the property line because we're gonna have to put in some piping for drainage for the roof, et cetera. And that it would be in his best interest to have that on his property rather than in the town right-of-way if the building were actually set at zero. So I think, I guess Amir was encouraged that he could build a zero setback. And what we did is initially, we started at pulling it at five feet back. It kind of moved to minimum of four feet. Ultimately, it ended up here at six feet, just giving some strip of additional green space on the front and still allowing the little green planting strip on the backside of the building before you have the sidewalk. We pretty much were locked into where the parking had to, you know, had to be laid out so that we didn't violate any of the setbacks to the wetlands in the rear section that's on the Amherst College land, actually. It was a tight fit. And could we have made this a tent-foot setback? Physically, it would have fit, but from a convenience point of view and driving through the parking lot, I think it would have been very tight. And, you know, we felt it was better to allow the maneuvering space for vehicles back there. And I know nobody likes to hear that, but it's a fact that, you know, you gotta allow these cars to be able to turn and get and maneuver through a parking lot. Otherwise, it becomes even more dangerous for pedestrians.
Thank you.
I wonder if you could talk a bit about the wetland area, which I know you're putting isolated wetlands in. And are they gonna be vegetated with trees? Is there, is that just a-
The replication area? Yeah. So the replication area is a low area at the low part of the site, outside of that parking area. And it's gonna be, I think we have native trees and some shrubs planted in there as well as a, like a wetland-type detention basin-type seed mixture. So we're basically letting it naturalize. And quite honestly, if we did nothing there, I think it would eventually turn into a wetland because there is pooling water on the Amherst College property. And I think that with the high groundwater in this area, that if you didn't mow it, for instance, it would kind of return to that natural state. Right now, it's being mown back there for lawn. So this area in the bottom-left corner is kind of nonusable. And we kind of maneuvered the parking such that we could provide this area. And it turned out, there's actually more than the two-to-one that's required for the replication of the isolated wetland. But we threw it in because it's, because, you know, from a practical standpoint, it's not usable to the project. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Yes. I have a question about, I know you're right next to this nature preserve, and I know there's often standing water. It's kind of a really murky area. And I have a question about lighting and how much lighting there will be at night because I would, I see animals and insects being attracted to that, from that reserve. And at the same time, you need to weigh, you know, people can walk out of their house and see something. And I'm just wondering, you know, it's, your plan says the lights are on for 24/7 or all night. Is there a way to?
I'm not, I'm not-
I think I read that.
Did we? Okay, I'm not, I don't remember that. The, I'm trying to look at this plan. There's light posts, the, in the center part of the site where there's the bigger blob, that light is in the island in the parking lot. So below that would be the replication area and then beyond would be the wooded area. To the, slightly to the right, there are two lights located on the southerly parking lot that would be, they have an elongated pattern of lighting. The two on the bottom there, I really need a pointer.
I agree. There's no pointer, Chris? It's dead? Okay.
So in terms of light casting backwards into the wooded area, there's a really a minimal amount. If we look at the light levels, if you look at those numbers, you can't read them, but most of them say 0.0. So the foot candles resulting from this lighting is gonna be nil at the tree line, essentially.
I do see that.
Can you say that in lay terms?
The light level, you won't, there's, there will be no measurable light level if you went to the tree line and used a light meter. Of course, you're gonna see lighting, you know, over on the site, but if you measured the light level at the tree line, according to this, which was prepared by lighting manufacturer, there won't be any, it would register zero.
Could I, Chris, we do have a bigger one and squinting, I can sort of see the zeros there, but is there a way we could get this electronically so we could zoom in on it or then you could actually see what he's talking?
I've tried to look at it. I can bring you the paper copy. I've tried to look at the electronic version and it's so blurry that you can-
Yeah, and I know you have smaller copies in front of you, so it's a little more difficult.
I can bring it, I can go back to my office and get it and you can pass it around if you'd like that? Would that be helpful?
Let me ask a couple more questions about lighting, because we'll see if-
I think we, you know, we, one of the prerequisites town has in that, you know, we had the lighting manufacturer produces, like, at the property line, you know, we want to have zero light level at the property line. I think that's achieved on the three sides and obviously not at the, on the street side, you know, because we've got these lights on the street here and the bus stop.
Right. This seems to be the night about light, but I have a question. So if you're looking at that plan and where you said the main entrance is, I also remember from the landscaping plan, I believe there's a tree there. And so you have provided us with parking lot lights, but are there going to be any lights on the building? Is there an overhang? Because right there, I can see the entrances-
I think you're probably gonna have porch lights at the doorways, you know, something of that nature.
So we would need to see additional lighting that you're putting on your building. Same concerns, downcast, night sky, you know?
I don't think you're proposing any building-mounted lights, but there would, I would imagine there'd be like, you know, like a porch light, you know, at entry doors.
Right, because that shows it's pretty dark going in your front main door there. So that needs to be expanded on a light plan. And to repeat myself from earlier, the Kelvin is very important to me. I, I, you know, rather than the 5700, the blue-white, you know, they're leaning more towards four, but even lower if you can consider. I do appreciate that a lot of this parking lot and the light shine, it isn't seen from the roadway, you know, and it's pushed behind the building, but I still think we should do, you know, do diligence in trying to keep it softer on the eyes and the wildlife.
We can, we can get that information and add it to the plan and kind of see what happens here.
Great. So that will get added and then resubmitted to us, okay. Yes, Chris?
I was wondering if the applicant could provide a photometric plan that actually showed the site? Because sometimes you do get photometric plans where you see the edges of the parking lot and the edges of sidewalks and things, and it's easier to read it and-
I agree in adding to that, that you just made me remember so much of this project crosses over into the public way. And we have a bus stop out front and we have a nice pedestrian mall or whatever it is. I can't remember from the site visit what street, what poles had streetlights there and if you're widening the road, are new ones going in.
We can verify that, but I do remember, I checked out the same thing one day driving by, and I think that there's a, there's a utility pole on the other side of the street, opposite the proposed bus stop that has a Cobra head on it. And I don't know where the next light is, but I think it's further to the south. And then obviously, you've got lights at College Street. But we can verify that information and, and those lines, I can see some curvy lines depicting the edge of the paving on there, but it is very hard to see. It turned out very light on the plan that they produced, so we can enhance it.
And the light is a little sketchy, I notice. It's hard to see, but if you look hard, you can see the walkways. And right next to the front of your building, they appear to be dark again. And again, thank you for the roadway improvements that you're willing to get involved with. And I don't know where these lines, Chris, get drawn between the two, but the walkway that leaves your property heading north, heading up towards the intersection, which I assume there'd be pedestrians at all times walking there, you know, that is not really addressed up there. Again, I can't remember what streetlights are there. And it is the public way, so, you know, we're encouraging people to walk. I don't know if that's a joint effort, but I don't know if it's bollards or another one of these lights. Does the board have any other questions regarding light, why we're adding to our list?
We were thinking about having a small light on the side of the wall, so for the-
Say that again, on the side of the?
On the, on the wall, on the, facing the street, so that the building, yeah, just very minimal, so that there would be more lighting. But because of this is, the Amherst comments, we try to do the minimum as possible and we are open for any suggestion.
It's a balance, right? And with the night sky compliance, they're great, except they don't throw a lot of light. Yeah. So your designers will help you with this. Thank you. Any other issues on the light or can we sort of, you got all that, Chris, and, yes?
I had one minor issue, which was what color are the light poles and the light fixtures going to be? Are they gonna be black, like they are downtown, or are they gonna be aluminum color? Or is there some other color?
The town was using black, I believe.
I believe so, yeah. So, I mean, we, yeah, we'd copy that, I think, yeah. They probably, we had a black finish.
Right. All right, light. Does someone want to bring up another topic or we can go through, you know, it's helpful to look at the development application report?
I have another question.
Go.
It's not on that, on that list, I think. Can you describe the nature of the edge between the property and the Amherst College conservation land?
Up in that triangular green space, it's basically gonna be left as it is. The wood line comes up to the property and that would still be green lawn space, but I don't, I don't know if Amir has an intention to keep mowing it or just letting it revert to, you know, successional wood, woodland species. If you wanted to help it get a head start, I don't think we'd be adverse to planting some additional trees in that location, but that's the only kind of open space on the site. The rest of it is pretty much you, there's minimal buffer from the parking, like on the south there, to the, to the, to the property line. And there's basically a tree line there, so that would be left intact.
So a resident could easily simply walk from the parking lot into the, into the conservation area?
I suppose so.
Because there are several trails that come out there.
Right, right. Yeah, I know that, I think there's some other trails to the south of this property too. I walked them many years ago, but, yeah, there wouldn't, there's nothing right now prohibiting the access.
You're not suggesting a fence or a barrier or a berm or something like that? It's just gonna be left essentially as it is?
Correct, yep.
I'd like to bring up the waivers that you've requested. There's three of them. A waiver of parking requirements, which is section 7.9 of the zoning bylaw. You've liked to waiver the traffic impact statement and the sign plan. If you could address those three, why you- If you could address those three, why you would like to waive those?
Okay, for the parking, I think the requirement is for two spaces per unit. We're asking for one space per unit. These are... I don't know if I should use the term, but more or less efficiency apartments. Kind of knowing that the clientele that Amir is trying to attract, I think that most would... Most residents would probably have one car if that. It's on a bus line, very, you know... We were proposing the bus stop coming in the other direction as well, which was looked on favorably by PVTA. So, for parking, we're asking for the one space per unit and then it requires... Which is six... Comes to 62 spaces. And then, based on the formula for the commercial space, we were required to have four spaces for the commercial part of it. So, that came to 66. And then, we've got 67 spaces, one extra. When we presented that idea to the building commissioner, he seemed very comfortable with the one space per unit, given this type of development. So, that's what we're proposing to have. The traffic impact statement, I mean, again, we're on Southeast Street, coupled with the widening of the street. This street is a, you know, collector. There's very good visibility on this street. It's a straight run. There's really no obstructions in this area. So, we didn't provide a traffic impact report. We didn't come up with, you know, traffic trip generation figures. We could do that if you'd like. We could generate that to get an idea of, you know, incoming outgoing vehicles at peak hours and so forth if that is desired. It wouldn't take that much effort to do that. We'll look at the ITE, trip generation manual and we could come up with that. But we felt that, you know, we didn't have... We shouldn't need to go into a full traffic impact report. Again, it's a very, you know, it's a village center. We're expected to have traffic in this area. There are shops, there's other conveniences, so people are traveling through here. Again, the streets are in all very good condition. Traffic seems to run smoothly and the project would realistically have a minimal impact on the level of service on the adjacent streets. But we will generate some trip numbers if you'd like. The sign, we're asking to waiver for that. There was... Amir didn't intend that the project would have a sign. So, in fact, I was kind of curious whether or not he wanted to even have some name of the project, you know, on a little plaque on the building or something, but at this point, I guess he doesn't have any desire to have like a project sign.
Yeah. Chris, would you...
I think if the owner would like to have a project sign in the future, if he has any idea of that, it would be good for the planning board to take that into consideration in a condition so that if such a sign were proposed, the applicant wouldn't have to come back to a public hearing but couldn't come back to a public meeting with the planning board. And the other thing is they have two retail spaces, so I'm wondering if the retail spaces would... Are there two or four retail spaces?
Two.
What, is in there two and two?
Four parkways, but you're getting four parkways.
Oh, thank you. Two, yeah, thank you.
So, it seems like the retail spaces would want to have signs also and so, but that's another opportunity to come back to you to show you signs for the retail spaces. And there's also the issue of an address. And, you know, at the other property that we looked at today on Main Street, there was a sign there that said, you know, it was kind of an index sign. Is that written... What you call it? You call it a directory sign, excuse me. But it will in the future show the address of the property and then it shows the different entities that are there. So, there may be a need to have something like that. And if you don't include it in your conditions, then the applicant will have to come back and go through the whole site plan review process.
So, should it be potentially two sign issue? Like the sign that names or gives the address or whatever of your apartments, but then there's two retail spaces?
I think Amir would like to maybe reconsider that, but if it is written in the conditions, I don't think we'd have a problem with, you know, complying with the signed by law and coming up with a design and having the... Is it the building commissioner that would ultimately approve that?
Right, and you don't have to bring that to us, that part, the details. It's just that it's a condition and it's easier to come back than to file out all...
Yeah, I think so. That makes sense. Yep, okay.
So, right, asking the other two.
So, I would like to see the traffic impact study with an... Just to know the vehicle trips and the... With an emphasis on pedestrian movement and bicycles also, because there's a lot that goes on in that intersection. There's at least 14, I counted, ways, like, you know, driveways in that intersection of North Hampton Bank and, you know, the auto... You know, there's combies and there's the auto inspection place and then there's some other driveways. And they're kind of all over the place. And, you know, you have cars coming out right where the bus is pulling out, that is going north. And then you have a new bus stop and, you know, at peak traffic. And there's not a... Most of the traffic, I think, is on Route 9, heading towards the university. I speak from deep, deep experience, I live on Southeast Street. But I just wonder about how vehicles move, how people cross the street with a bus, you know, how you bike down and if this is the best place to put your driveway.
In addition to that, as an add-on, I think there's a visibility problem to the south. If you're pulling out of that driveway, the woods are a problem in terms of visibility going... Looking south to northbound traffic. So, if anybody's pulling out of there, going north, it might be an issue. So, I think you should look at that as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So, just adding to... I know the trip generation, that's not hard to do. Then there's these other factors that we're talking about and the road is changing. A lot of this is projected and being designed because we're going to widen the road and the whole right of way is being changed. Chris, I would hope that the town engineer, that Jason Skills, could also assist and give a little oversight on this because some of this is... It's the town right of way, you know.
So, there are really two options. One is to have a letter written by a traffic engineer that describes what the trip generation for this site would be and talks about some of the issues that you've brought up, including site distance and blocking of sight lines and things like that. And the other would be a full-blown traffic report, which requires counting traffic on all the streets in the vicinity and then determining whether there needs to be improvements to nearby intersections. I think that's probably a bridge too far for this project, but I think having the letter describing what trips you're expecting to come out of the property and some of the issues that may arise as a result of numerous entrances and exits, those things could be addressed in a letter from a traffic engineer.
Knowing what I know about that subject, I agree with you. I don't think the volume that we're talking about here, which the whole point of a traffic input is not that it's a busy road, which it is, it's a connector, but how much of an impact this project would have on daily trips. The other parts are important in consideration of, you know, pedestrians and making it, you know, friendly for bikes and all that. But I would be content seeing trip generation done and that's a starting point because that gives you the numbers of where to sort of decide, do we need to go further? Is that...
Sure, I think that makes sense. I mean, from my perspective, I'm not a traffic engineer either, but, you know, we've got a very well-controlled intersection to the north at Route 9 with crosswalks. You've got lights, traffic lights there. You've got, I believe, there's pedestrian crossing, signalization also. We're also adding a crosswalk here, as you can see, between the two... The existing bus stop and the new one that's identified. It's set back from the two bus stops so pedestrians have a... Or drivers have a clearer view of pedestrians crossing because they're not jumping out in front of a bus, et cetera. So, that was a requirement that the town put forth, that we have a crosswalk in that location. And I guess, you know, obviously, we're happy to do that to help improve the safety in this area. You know, obviously, sometimes people run across the street in different locations, but, you know, we are providing that, you know, safe crossing from one side to the other.
Just to keep in mind, you know, it's a mid-block crosswalk.
I know, I know.
Which is not ideal.
Right, right. They're really high on that. North Hampton drives me crazy.
And we're in flux with the RRF, these, the flashers right now. Right, so I think what happens is line of sight. And widening the road actually does speed up traffic. It is... It helps to have that controlled intersection to the north.
Hopefully, people...
The other way is the issue when they're coming out of that intersection, that they have the urge to.
Part of the road widening, the town told us that they desire to have... It's 34 feet wide from curb to curb. With a 24-foot wide, you know, two 12-foot lanes in each direction and then the town wanted to add, you know, five-foot bicycle lanes in this stretch. So, I don't know if that's going to continue in the future, but, you know, it's intended to be able to accommodate a five-foot bicycle lane on each side. So, hopefully, coupled with additional pavement markings, et cetera, it's going to be a little bit better controlled in terms of traffic and hopefully that, you know, people will be slowing down because, you know, they're approaching an intersection.
Right. Just to confirm, you said 24? So, you're talking about it's 12-foot lanes? Was that from the town?
Yeah, that was what the town requested or required, a 30-foot... 34-foot total pavement width.
Interesting. So, in that letter, when you're including the trip generation, if it could also, back to Michael's point, when you're pulling out of the driveway and overall, I am glad that the driveway is further away from the intersection as possible because that's a safety. But could you take a look at how the line of sight does look as you look to the south? And is there good visibility? Great.
Absolutely, yep. We'll go and document that and take some photos as well.
Any other questions on the traffic?
One thing I do want to just point out, in the... Amir owns the four properties on the other side of the street. At some point, he is intending to do another project over there and it will eliminate some of those residential driveways. So, there'll actually be a few fewer curb cuts on that side of the street.
That's true. Any other traffic or does anyone have any parking? Oh, do you want to... Go ahead.
What are... At the proposed driveway, what happens to the sidewalks south of the... You're putting in a sidewalk running north from the driveway to Florence Savings Bank. What happens to the south on that little bit?
There's just a curb ramp there. Ultimately, it might continue at a future date if anything happens with the town decides to build more sidewalk on Southeast Street. I think our proposal is to stop it at the driveway currently.
But they just finished at the other side, you know.
There's a sidewalk on the other side of the street that goes up to Colonial Village.
Correct.
Thank heaven, finally.
Oh, it does? Okay, all right.
Great. I know I have some parking questions. Does anyone have parking questions? So, I agree with you with industry trends on parking and that the two for one would be overkill. And you also feel that that number, you've chosen that number because this is the reason why the special permit is involved, because your setback is the six feet, where if you had gone four more feet to 10, that would eliminate that. But I assume this is impacting your parking plan. If you could touch on which ones are compact spaces and which ones are standard and any other thoughts you have with that?
Yeah, and actually, that's a good point. We had to provide some compact parking spaces in order to get that extra two feet, if you will, to be able to reduce the pavement by two feet just in order to get this layout to fit. So, the compact parking spaces are on the far left-hand side, facing the woods, the Amherst College property. On the south, very south side, facing the Amherst College property. And on the north side, facing the building wing. So, basically, the compact spaces are kind of around the outside.
And the rest are standard?
Correct.
And you balance that as you were trying to fit it to the site?
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions? David? David?
I have two questions. On the south, south, how will it drain on the south... And the southwest corner of the parking lot? And then, like, the question that... My second question is, did you consider... Would you... Or would you consider including electric charging space or two? Two would be really, you know, would be the number in among them, among these. I'm also interested in how it drains. Does it just drain into the woods or will it drain back into some system?
Well, for the drainage, all the runoff from the paved parking area is direct... Is caught in catch basins and piped to an underground detention basin in that southern parking lot area. It's going to go through a treatment chamber and then into the underground detention basin for attenuation. And then, there's an outlet, overflow outlet, which discharges back to the... Out of the underground basin in a westerly direction to the... Back to the wetland. Or actually, it would discharge into the replicated area.
But that will happen from the catch basin system?
Yeah.
If it happened underneath?
Correct.
Not from the surface?
No, there's no surface runoff directed outside of the parking areas. It's all caught, if you will.
Can you put up L4 or...
Yep.
Can we zoom on that southern...
So, in that southern parking area, you can see the kind of heavy dashed line. That's the underground detention basin. There's actually... There's actually a... Oh, thank you. Well, hey, does your finger work on that?
Great, good.
Can we pan? Nope. Well, so, you can see kind of these little circles on the plan. There's a catch basin in the far north corner of the parking lot. There's a catch basin to the south. The one from the north is connected... They both... Both catch basins discharge to this double circular symbol. That's the stormwater treatment chamber where oils and sediment is filtered out and then that connects into the underground basin. When that fills up, water will, you know, discharge back out toward the replicated wetland area. There's a second subsurface detention basin, a rectangular shape on the west side under the parking lot. That is for the... We're directing the roof drainage into that to help it discharge. Well, to slow it down and let it discharge. It's a simple drainage system in terms of like, there's only two catch basins required, but it's really not that big of a paved area. So, there's a ridge across the parking lot. So, the north part of the parking lot drains to the north and the south drains to the south, but it's all caught. This is all curbed. So, we're not allowing water to sheet off of the paved areas. Thank you.
Any other...
And then, the electric charging spaces?
Oh, oh.
Would that be a consideration?
I guess we're talking about the electric charging spaces potentially?
Yeah, actually, we have... We were thinking about designating some for the resident who have the electric car that they want to do that. Another plan is that also, an auto express, I'm thinking of, you know, providing some for the car that, you know, want to electric charge. But there... For sure, there would be some designated parking space for the electric car. Also, for the two-to-one was that, you know, we have been going through this for years with Chris and building inspector. And the buses stop that you see on the other side, I donated the land when they were improving the Southeast Street and to just... donated the land when they were improving the Southeast Street, and to just make sure that we would have a bus stop to basically encourage people to use the public bus. So that's why I think one-to-one is, would be adequate.
Just one other transportation issue. Is there going to be a bike rack?
Yes.
And where would that be placed?
Well, this plan is showing at the, at the entrance to the building, you see the little diagonal piece of paving with the, one, I can't count them, five, five, there's five bike loops shown there for, you know, to park bicycles.
And that's uncovered?
Correct, yeah.
Five uncovered, and if demand was there, you could find another space to put another one?
Yeah, we could find-
Because you don't want bikes just getting, right? Yeah.
So when people are moving into this building, what do they do? Because it seems like there's no place to unload bags or packages or anything like that. It seems like it's just parking spaces and then a door. And then there's only one elevator for sixty people in the building, which seems sort of...
The elevator was not required for, when you have a three-story building. We put it as a convenient for the people.
Could you, could you show me where that is? I can't.
The elevator is right at the L shape.
In the, in the, well, Roy will, maybe Roy could point that out on the plan, yep.
I, I was just, it was just pointed out for me, thanks.
So in, in the meeting of the two wings in the central part, there's a, there's an office, a management rental office, there's a small laundry for the residents?
No, no, there is none.
Oh, there is no, oh, okay, I thought there was. We got deleted, okay.
We have a lounge that, you know, basically-
Small lounge, okay, and then an elevator in that, in that core.
Could you repeat, there is no laundry, because it, or?
Each, each unit has its own.
Each unit has its own laundry.
So it's not what we're looking at?
The laundry is no, you're, separate room.
Speak in-
Sorry.
Each unit has its own washer dryer.
Okay, so that space that says laundry here is now going to be a lounge?
Lobby.
Okay.
Lobby now.
Lobby lounge.
So is there any place to unload, to pull up a car and unload? I can't, I-
For that lobby, you have the elevator.
Well, speak into this and point if you have to, I'm sorry.
That lobby by the elevator is going to basically provide a space for people to just basically unload and off.
I mean, I'm just saying, if you pulled up your moving van or your, I mean, where would you do that? Just, oh, yeah?
There's actually a couple of other, there's actually a couple of other egress doors, but the main door again is here, so I would envision that, you know, a van could pull up here if it needed to unload out the back and get to this door. But there's also an egress door at this stairwell, and there's a door right here at this stairwell. So there are other ways for people to, to access the building, and are their keys going to be able to open those doors, I would assume? Yeah, or card key. So they'd be locked, obviously, but residents would be able to, you know, get into those doorways as well.
So Janet's got me thinking now, we have two retail spots, and I don't know what they're going to be. You can talk about what you're designing or imagining, but I would assume most retail spaces have deliveries. Where, you know, if they pull in where the driveway is and they then are dolly carting it up, you know, up to the door, because I know there's no, it didn't appear that there were egresses or doors from the main hallways into your retail space. So how, what's the plan with the retail deliveries?
It would be some, exactly the same way that we have it in downtown, that, you know, from the front door, and there is a sidewalk that goes along the building.
Actually, can we use our new mouse?
Well, these are, these are the doors right here, these to the retail. So I'm not sure how you, you're envisioning that they perhaps have to pull out on the side of the road?
Yeah.
For a short time to unload?
And there's no backdoor to the retail.
And then dolly, goods.
No, there is no backdoor.
Yeah.
So where would they park?
I guess they, well, I think he's, we're saying that the trucks would have to park on the street.
Either in the, the street or the-
Potentially on the street.
In the parking lot, and then, you know, they have to basically, whoever is doing it, they have to-
Well, it's tough because there's a bus stop, and then after, to the north of the bus stop, we start getting very close to the intersection, which that's not good. So it'd have to be below the bus stop, is...
I imagine that they can come through the, right at the driveway and just, you know, or go to the back of the building, whatever it is. My envisioning about the retail space is that it would be low demand, that's that it wouldn't have that much of a loading or offloading. That is what, I don't want, you know, high-traffic retail. I don't know what, who is going to come and what they would be doing, but that's what I know, I'm imagining that, you know, I would be renting it to the people who have very, not very, so much demand on the loading and offloading.
What kind of utilities are you putting in? Like, could there be a restaurant, or is it more like office space?
Office space.
That's what you're think, okay, so office space.
Something that, you know, wouldn't have that much of an impact, so much impact.
Okay, that's helpful. Any other questions with the loading or doors or parking area? Is everyone, yeah, go ahead, Jack, please.
So the town engineer has not reviewed the stormwater report?
I think the town engineer has reviewed stormwater in the context of the Conservation Commission review, but that happened several months ago. I don't think he's had a chance to review these drawings. We haven't gotten any comments from him.
You think that letter was dated like October 2018 or something? Is that the one in our packet?
That's the correct, the letter in the packet is from October. Yes, that's right.
And has the, have the plans been significantly changed since then?
Basically, the site hasn't changed, but it was, we were kind of working out what was going to happen in the, in the town right-of-way.
So speaking of that, and the grading plan, there's concern and issues with how much fill is going to have to be put on the lot and in the townway to get a flat surface for the build. Is that an evolving thing right now? Is that known, or?
No, that's, that's known.
Okay.
The building is approximately, the finished floor of the building is two feet eight inches higher than Southeast Street.
Two feet, eight inches higher?
Yeah.
Is, I was looking at the architectural, is there a basement or, or not?
Only utility basement.
Yeah.
Okay, where the elevator is.
Uh, yeah. Exactly right. I can point that out to you if you like.
Yeah, because I was thinking with the high groundwater, you're going to have a basement there, I was like, didn't make sense.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
So if fill goes into the town public way, Chris, does the town council have to approve that part? Because there, yeah?
The town and council will have to approve any of the improvements that are being done within the right-of-way. The improvements that are immediately in front of the building, and I think also in the roadway, but I'm not sure exactly about that.
I would think the roadway, okay. Go ahead, Jack.
On, on a related matter to the parking and the drive, we're also looking for the fire department approval, okay? So in terms of, you know, fire truck access and, and other issues, I guess we'd be interested in that.
So did we agree that the town engineer would look at the storm, revisit that and revisit his memo? Yeah?
I think the town engineer needs to look at this whole set of plans and give us his opinion on them, even if he just refers back to his old letter and says, all of these things have been taken care of, or some statement about this current set of plans. And Mr. Lu can, what should I say, promote that idea by going to the town engineer and talking to him and saying, please submit a letter to the planning board that gives comments on this set of plans. Sometimes the applicant has more effect than the other town staff.
How can that be?
So we've got the site management plan, which I believe we have?
In the blue.
Yeah. Yeah, that, the only issues, so, are you planning to manage the property, or are you going to outsource it?
Outsource it.
You are? So a note here from you is right, the applicant should submit a complaint response plan as part of the management plan? I don't know if you, they talked to you about that. What does that entail, Chris?
Well, you actually have one for your next applicant, and I could give it to Mr. McChee as an example of what would be acceptable. It's part of the rental registration program, that you need to have somebody available to respond to any complaints that come forward. And I also think that the app, management plan should clarify that the applicant wants to hire a management company to manage the property, and he should name that, that entity that's going to manage the property.
Does that sound helpful if you get an example?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Um, engineering stormwater, construction logistics plan. Has anything been submitted on that?
That's something that you might consider putting into a condition, that a construction logistics plan be submitted before the building permit is issued, and that's helpful, particularly in these very tight sites where it's not clear where staging would happen, it's not clear where contractors would park, it's not clear where, you know, the machines and the material would be stored, because the whole site is going to be under construction. So I think it's going to be an important piece here to make this project run smoothly.
Okay, and you said submit that before?
Before the building permit, I think, yes, submit it before the building permit.
Does that make sense to you all?
Yeah, yeah. I think that, you know, there's, there's room to stage on the site too, and with the, the option of using properties on the other side of the street for potentially storage of materials, since Amir owns those lots, he's willing to, to do that to free up space, if you will.
Right. Chris?
So I would recommend that the applicant and his consultants talk to the building commissioner about what would be the ideal construct, construction logistics plan before they submit it. Just make sure that they're hitting all the things that he would be concerned about, and, and when they submit it to you, it will be adequate.
If you could just touch on the trash, where the dumpsters are, and how the truck would come in?
Now that I've got this fancy thing, so-
Yay, mouse.
This is the dumpster and recycling location, so trucks would enter, maneuver around here to be able to pick up front loading, and then, you know, do a little backup, and then, you know, exit easily this way.
Is that a twice-a-week thing, or how often do you think that would be?
We haven't decided on that. Depends on what is the demand.
I would imagine it would at least be a weekly, yeah, pickup.
Doesn't that get put on one of the forms, Chris? Or this, the management, is that?
It usually does get put on the management plan.
Yeah.
So that would be helpful to have that information, who's picking up the trash and how many times a week.
So this one needs to be more detailed, the management plan form.
Well, they want it.
For the trash and recycling.
The Republican.
Also, it's sort of the same with the snow removal?
Right.
Like, you know, add more?
Right.
Who, who you're going to contract with?
I think we need to add the kind of snow.
Does anyone have any questions about landscaping, maintenance plan, landscaping?
This is kind of about landscaping. The, the facade of the building is, is pretty massive, and if it's only six feet away from the right-of-way, my question is about with the sidewalks. In, you know, in downtown, where you have full bit, full, zero lot line buildings, the sidewalks are quite wide, you know? I don't know, I'm not sure what the numbers are, eight feet? Something like that. These sidewalks look significantly smaller than that. Do you know what the width of these sidewalks is?
I believe they're six feet. Six feet.
Six feet?
Yeah. I mean, there's a significant number of shoppers and stores downtown, obviously.
Right, I'm thinking more from an aesthetic point of view than a, a business point of view. Because of the mass of the building, which is much larger than anything else in the area, it seems to me that wider sidewalks might be more attractive, if it's not a problem with the right-of-way or the town.
I will add, DOT standard is now five feet. Anything over that, of course, is better. Six is better, but if you, and I know there's a cost associated with the sidewalk, but-
More than the cost, it is the, because this is Amherst Commons, more than the cost, it is because it's Amherst Commons, we really have to, we submitted, Mike, submitted three rendering about what it's going to look like, and they told us this is the one that they picked, and we tried to, and they asked that, you know, everything should be minimal.
Who picked?
Chris?
The, the plant, planning staff kind of favored this layout, but, I mean, not, you know, not a specific sidewalk width per se, but if, like, you know, I mean, ultimately, if, you know, if we want eight-foot walks, I don't, you know, that's something that Amir would consider if you wanted to increase this, but I don't know if it's necessary.
I mean, it's balancing use with, with bike lane, you know, that's sometimes the cons, eight for, eight to ten is like a bike trail.
For a bike trail, yeah.
A multi-use path, and where the, if bike lanes are going in, so is the town way, you know, thought about?
So the town, it was just some staff people who spoke with Mr. McChee and his consultant about various scenarios that they had for this piece of town property that's right in front of his building, and this configuration seemed like a good configuration with the size of a plaza. We didn't really talk about the width of sidewalks. So what they might do is look at the sidewalk width on the other side of the street that the town just put in, and try to match that, at least for the sidewalk that runs right along the edge of the road. I think that would make sense.
My guess is that would be a five at max, but if six was willing to be a go, I'd rather see six than five.
We can, we can take a measurement. Amir thinks the, the new sidewalks on the other side might only be four feet.
I am afraid they might be, but when were they redone?
Like-
A few years ago.
Okay, well, and DOT, it's recent that they've changed their recommendation from four to five, so that could be what happened. Okay. Um, so we have a long list of stuff that we need.
Also, public comment, do we ask?
Yeah, we're, right. So just, we have a lot to come back, is what I'm going to say, so we're obviously not going to finish this tonight, because, so there'll be another chance to look at the new information that comes in, and anything that we're forgetting, or, you know, hasn't come to mind at this point. It's been a lot of coverage. Yes, Chris?
There's one more thing that I thought of, which might be useful to you, and that would be either a sketch or a cross-section or something between this building and the Florence Savings Bank, because Florence is a pretty big building, it's in this vicinity, and it would give you a sense of what the mass of this building is in regard to other buildings in the area.
Bring across, okay, great. And that's on the list now. Okay, so at this point, if the board is good for now, we're going to open up to public comment. We have to do a little juggling, because you guys will still have to answer questions- We have to do a little juggling because you guys will still have to answer questions, but we'll need one chair open so that people can come up and ask their questions. So I don't know how you guys want to do it. Okay. Thank you. How many, can I just see a show of hands? How many people do have questions that they'd like to come forward and ask? One, two. So I see two hands. Okay. So Ms. Pam, if you want to come up and just state your, your name and your address because I assume you're here as a resident.
Yes. Dorothy, Dorothy Pam, 229 Amity Street. I'm still confused about the public, the public land or the town owned right of way. And the building is going to come right up to the absolute edge of it. Is that correct?
Six feet. Six feet and the zoning requirement is seven. So they're asking for, I'm sorry, did I say, this is going to be a long night. Ten, it's 10 to 20 is what is in the zoning. And at first they had said zero, but then it's been altered through redesign and it's now at six feet back.
Because you, the picture had two sidewalks, one near the street and one right along the edge of the building. And you have people with first floor apartments. I mean, I think you just can stand on that sidewalk and look in the windows and see what they're doing. Their doors are also right up there on the street or are the only entrances from the back? From the back, okay. Also, the little half rounds, half circle that you called a public gathering place, I find that a difficult phrase because it's right in front of the retail stuff and I, I don't imagine any tenants ever gathering there. I just think it would be strange. I just, I, I guess there's no, I see that the, the plan does not provide green. It doesn't provide and really real space, which would be in the inside of the crook of the building, where the parking is, where people could actually sit in a chair or chat with each other. Because the wetlands area is full of trees and I guess it's wet. I'm not sure. It just seemed very antisocial and kind of sterile to me. So it looks very massive and unfriendly. It kind of, I mean, I, I kind of liked the design in a way, but it reminded me of old factories in Hartford. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Do you have any comments? I, I just want to ask for clarification. Mr. O'Connor, you can come and sit. I just, we talked about a common gathering space. Are there benches or anything? I couldn't remember if there's any landscape furniture.
There aren't, but I don't, I don't think that, you know, again, it, it's a management issue. Amir's agreed to take responsibility of the maintenance of that area for the, you know, it's in the town right of way. He's currently mowing there. So he's proposing to continue mowing there and look after the trees that are planted. And we've got the plaza, I don't, you know, we'd have to discuss whether he'd be willing to put furniture out there. Or, you know, we could potentially look at putting in permanent seating. Right now, there is none.
Okay. Thank you.
Vincent O'Connor, 175 Summer Street, Amherst. So I have a number of areas and some minor comments based on my service on town committees and so forth. So maybe I'll just start off with a simple one. When I last talked to the building commissioner, he was in the process of his initial discussions with the North Square folks about how they're going to provide for the snowfall off the roofs of their buildings. So I think rather than wait until the buildings are half, these buildings are half completed, it might be a good idea for the planning board as the permitting authority to insist that there be some reasonable discussion of, of how, where the snowfall off the roofs are going to fall and therefore how the site is going to accommodate the snowfall. So that, that's one, that's one issue. I, with regard to the comments, the previous public comment and my own concerns, I would refer the board to section 11.2403, which, which says that there should be adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities. I, I think that there is, for the number of housing units here, there is not sufficient of any of these things that are required on by that section. And I think it is the, the operation of this section, which I think might cause the board to consider by some way of reducing the number of units to be more consistent with the, a more appropriate use of the space and more appropriate facilities for the potential tenants. I was chair of the bicycle committee, the committee on bicycling for six years from 1988 to 1994. And I can just tell you that the number of bicycle parking spaces in this era of five for a building of this size is not adequate. And the location of those spaces in front of the building is really not a good idea. Those spaces should be in, in some kind of a sheltered area with an overhang in back of the building where the parking is. Because that will, you don't want to advertise bikes for the stealing. And so you have many more eyes on bicycles if they're, if, you might have for the visitors to the commercial area, you might want to have a couple of, you know, a few spaces in front, but there should be about maybe 10 spaces in back or some similar number if, but again, if the number of units are reduced and then, you know, there might be fewer spaces required. I live in an apartment that is probably less than 500 square feet that has two bedrooms. There is no place to put a bicycle. And certainly bicycles should not be stored in the hallways of a building with this many housing units. Whether, even if it was a two-floor building, it would not be a good safety idea to have people putting their bicycles in hallways. So adequate storage and parking spaces for bicycles is important. Now I think we get to some of the real difficulties with the proposal. In, in Amherst, I think with 62 units, you're going to end up with somewhere between 90 and 120 residents. And the way to do a quick check on that is through the town clerk's office as to how many folks reside in the three, five-story buildings that have been built that have a similar types of housing units, which is Kendrick Place, One East Pleasant Street and Olympia Place. And the way to tell how many cars are required, and I can give you the number for the first year for Kendrick Place, there were 57 parking permit applications because Kendrick Place is in the downtown and only had four parking spaces inside, two for Zip Cars and two for HP Spaces. And of the 38 units in Kendrick Place, I think the first year they had only rented out about 30. So 57 applicants, 30 housing, for 30 housing units that were rented the first year. The collector's office, I believe, will have those statistics for all those buildings. For Olympia Place, the, the numbers will be in the possession of the UMass Parking Authority because folks who reside in Olympia Place have to get a parking permit from the university because there's not very much parking there. And in fact, they have to be related to the university, which allows them to get a parking permit from the UMass Parking Authority. So, and I really think that there needs to be some kind of a professional study as to how many residents we, I listened to presentations for the five-story buildings claim there was only going to be one resident per, per bedroom. In a college town, given the likely cost of rent for a one-bedroom apartment, that's not a realistic thing. And in fact, on weekends, you have visitors, you have family members coming and in that parking lot, unless the apartments are going to be fully furnished, as they are in some of the other proposals, you're going to have to have spaces for people with trucks bringing the furnishings to, to their apartments and a, and a, and an elevator capable of, of elevating those, those furnishings to the various floors. So with respect to, I've already had my say about lighting, but with respect to recycling, I do think it would be useful if we're moving into a new era to see whether there can be some composting facility available, but also that the recycling require, be required to be separated. Because as, as many of you know, the United States recycling loads are being rejected all over Asia because they're contaminated. And they're contaminated because when you don't, when you don't separate recyclables, what happens is you end up with a lot of garbage. And I live in an apartment complex where our recycling bin, it becomes a second garbage disposal facility. So my, there has to be some kind of a professional study regarding how many persons will live in this building because that will tell you how many cars there will be. And you can again, check with the, the buildings that have been recently constructed with similar types of thing. So, and I was happy to hear about the charging, proposal to charging electrical, for electric vehicles. My additional comment, all three of the five-story buildings that have been proposed with similar types of housing things, not a single one has any photovoltaic arrays or anything that would even generate enough electricity to heat the hot water in the building. And I think that, I think when you're in a hole, as I think we are with respect to the environment, the first thing you do is you stop digging. And what I mean by stopping digging is permitting buildings that contribute to the problem but do not contribute to the solution. So I do think that the board should consider requiring that there be some meaningful solar gathering that, to serve an important, useful function for the building. This is not a building that's going to be built in 2020 and then we're going to turn the clock back and it'll end its useful life in, in 1960. The building is going to go forward. And as it does, our problems with CO2 and other things released into the environment are going to get worse, not better. And the building should not contribute to the worsening of the problem. So finally, with respect to the bylaw itself that permits this mixed-use building, which has become sort of a fiction because there is a building that was permitted that for, as a mixed-use building, which has, as, as yet I have not seen any commercial use on the ground floor. And so what I would like the board to consider as part of its review of this application is look at the section of the bylaw that talks about mixed use. Because there's no definition of what the mixed use is, which it seems to me, since planning boards are not presidential bodies like the Supreme Court, the board can take a look at that statute and say, well, there ought to be at least the same percentage of commercial space in this building as there are in other buildings of a similar nature that had been previously permitted. Or we think that mixed-use buildings should, in other words, not just a postage, a place to sell US postage or something, but there has to be some, I think the board ought to really consider looking at the statute and saying, in order for this statute to be meaningful, some minimal percentage of the floor space of a structure has to be devoted to commercial space. And I think it's within the board's authority to do that, but I think also whenever the board permits, if it chooses to do so, a mixed-use structure, the board ought to insist that before, to avoid what has happened in the past, that the board ought to insist that there be a, before any residential occupancy permit is issued by the building commissioner, that the commissioner and the board be presented with a signed commercial contract for the use of the commercial spaces. So that we don't have a series of mixed-use buildings where the occupancy permit for the residential use is granted and the, and the commercial spaces sit vacant and give the impression to the public that this, that this is an apartment building that, where in fact, an apartment building and the mixed-use statute is a fiction that is being used to permit apartment buildings in locations and of sizes and so forth and of nature of things that would not be permitted under the apartment building statute. Look at the apartment building statute, look at this statute and see if in fact, what I have said is, is not a problem. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. We have another comment, please?
I was going to ask about handicap spaces. You could say much.
Sit down, catch your breath.
I'm okay. Maureen Adams.
You've woken us up, Maureen. Pardon?
You woke us up.
Oh, good. I woke myself up as well. So before I get to speaking about handicap spaces, I do want to say that I lived on Southeast Street for a long time down at Fort Hill. So I know how the road narrows as it goes under that bridge. I know how people zoom up and down that road with no expectation there'll be anything until you get to the actual crosslights. I also, I don't use Auto Express very much, but I do use a 7-Eleven and I try to fill up my car there from time to time. Let me tell you, trying to get out of that driveway, either to turn east, I mean, to turn north, or God save us, if we had to go across traffic to go south, I am not convinced by all the plans that this is going to be a safe area, particularly if the plan is, and I was very glad for the honesty of the proposer, to have development on the other side of the road as well. There's also a large entrance, a little bit farther down Southeast Street to Colonial Village. It's kind of, and it's used quite a bit. So you have Colonial Village, you have the Auto Express. So you have Colonial Village, you have the Auto Express, you have the filling station, you have this new unit, and you have traffic that is not yet accustomed to this being so built up. So I am very concerned about the traffic issues, number one, having used them myself and tried to negotiate them. I have heard nothing at all about handicapped units. I don't know if that's required, but it certainly is desirable. And even young professionals can be handicapped. One doesn't have to get as old as I am to need that kind of unit, which leads me to the issue of apartments somehow... I mean, I'm sorry, to the, of elevators. I am a little shaken by falling. It somehow makes me think of European hotels where there's only one elevator, and people are trying to get up and down before going down very long, narrow passageways to get to their rooms. A single, it may be that there are very kind of jogger-friendly residents that we're hoping for, but I would hope for at least two elevators on each end of the building. Because three stories is a bit of a climb when one's coming back with groceries and bags from school and other things. So, that's not an objection so much as a, it's a concern. I'm also very concerned, as other people have said, about there being no outdoor amenities. I mean, it, it makes me feel, if I were going to live there, I'd need to be really nerdy. That I'd go to work, and I'd come back, and I'd go to sleep, and there'd be no place to sit out in the sun. There would be, you know, it, if, it doesn't feel user-friendly, not to have green space, residential space, places to kind of put up a beach chair or, you know, to put a grill outside. And it's, it's because it's so tight, and it's because there are so many units. So I would encourage a reduction of scale. I'm also concerned about the issue of storage. As someone who moved from graduate school to an efficiency apartment, to another efficiency apartment, if you don't have parents to leave stuff with, and there's no place to put stuff, and you're in an efficiency apartment, you're in real trouble. And I would ask the planning board to think about that. Solar panels, this is an incredible opportunity to put solar panels on. I know in town that we had agreements about town buildings of a certain scale. But I would very much like to see the planning board encourage this. We're seeing a lot of active development. We're not seeing solar panels. The, you, it's going to generate a lot of electricity. And I, I, I've made my point. And then the last one is, I heard the answer about professional use for the retail space as a response to the lack of pull-up space for delivery of supplies. But it occurs to me that a 62 or even fewer residents with very small space, people will want to go down to a restaurant, they'll be wanting to go down to a cafe. Those would be the likelier occupants of the retail space, and they'll need delivery space. So I, I don't see this as an issue to be shrugged off by the board. So those are my concerns. And I'll try to make my seat in one piece.
Thank you. Are there any of those issues you'd like to address? You don't have to address them, but if there's just any...
No, as far as the handicap, yes. We have a few units that is designed for the handicap specifically.
Could you say that again?
For the handicap.
The question was handicapped apartments. The code requires those. There are three. And they're in there. And handicap parking spaces are also there.
I believe we have four handic, four handicap spaces on the, on the site plan.
As far as the green was concerned, we have this, my intention is that, you know, we would take advantage of this, and we encourage people to take advantage of the Amherst Commons that is there. And we are going to have benches, but we didn't minimal because, you know, we wanted to have the feedback from the other people to basically tell us, you know, to what extent we would like, they would like us to go. And that was the reason. Obviously, we would like to have benches, and we did propose it to, in the beginning. But we were encouraged to just basically make it to minimum as possible. That was the reason. But, you know, there's plenty of space there, and that was the whole, basically, the idea that, you know...
I'm sorry, could you, can you clarify what you mean by that? When you say the Amherst Common, do you mean the space in front of the building?
Yes. Yes.
Does the board have, is there any other public here who have questions? Is it something new, Mr. O'Connor?
And I'm sorry again, Vince O'Connor, 175 Summer Street. With the importance of making sure that the number of units and the number of residents really fit this location is, I think, with respect to parking, I think can't be overstated because unlike some of the buildings that have been constructed in the center of Amherst, in this location, there are no surrounding residential streets with parking permit locations where the residents of this building or their, or their visitors could park. You cannot park on Southeast Street. You cannot park on College Street or Belcher Town Road. There is no place, and you should not be creating a situation where the residents of this building start parking at Colonial Village or in the commercial space, the banks, the commercial spaces where the bank is. And I think if, if this project is not sized properly and thought through clearly, you will end up with a very serious problem between the residents of this space who won't have enough parking and surrounding business and residential properties. And I don't think the board should allow that to go on.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Chris?
Just wanted to clarify one thing. When we first started looking at this project and the space in front of the building, we called this the Amherst Common because we thought it was an extension of the common that's up by the old East Street School. But since then, we've done some research, and the research has shown that this area south of Belcher Town Road is not really part of that common. The common really just exists north of Belcher Town Road. So I just wanted to clarify that. This is just an area of wider right-of-way, and it's not a common.
Thank you. Does the board have any other comments or questions at this time? I just have one that didn't get addressed. Did you think about solar?
I have been approached with the solar for my other buildings, and there is pros and cons. And even though I'm very much interested, you know, in doing that, but we have on this building, we have condensers on the top. And to put a solar on the, and the, we just have a little bit of roof facing south. So it's really, it's not efficient. It's not in all cost benefit to really go through so much to put that one. So that was the reason.
Okay, so, that's a lot. So if there's no more questions for now on the board, we could continue this to a future date. When would that be possible, Chris?
I think the best date would be September 18th, because I believe that there will be members of the planning board available for that night. You might want to take a poll to see if all these members would be available on the 18th.
Would the 27th be an option after the other tree?
I'm sorry, we did talk about that earlier. I lost my focus. Yes, we did talk about, August 27th, yes. I only know of one planning board member who's available that night so far, so we would need to poll the people who are here tonight to find out if they are available on August 27th.
And what time was that meeting to start? The first one, the tree? Because you're saying do the tree hearing, and then at the end of that, we would continue this.
So the tree hearing would probably be scheduled for 7:05? And then this could be scheduled for 7:15 or something like that?
So who is available on the 27th Tuesday? It's a different night for us?
I am.
You're available?
Yes.
You think you are good? I believe I am too. I'm just checking. I'm available. Jack is a go. David, how does your world look?
I don't know.
Okay, that's okay. So we have maybe leaning yes, or maybe leaning not sure. And we have three of us, so we would have to find out with the other two members if they're available. Yep?
So I have heard from Ms. Chow, because I did reach out to her about the 27th for the tree hearing, and she told me that she is available on the 27th. So have we said that three definite from this group here?
Three, and Maria.
And Maria, and then Janet?
She thinks. A good maybe.
So you could continue it to the 27th, and then if we find out people aren't available, then we continue it again to the 18th.
Does that date sound okay to?
August 27th?
Yes, August 27th. So the tree hearing is earlier, and then we would do this right after. I know there's some information you have to gather too, so...
Sure, sure, yeah. Seems like that would be, we'd need that amount of time to try to assemble some responses here.
Makes sense. Okay. So we need a motion to continue this public hearing till the 27th, and then?
I move to continue the public hearing for site plan so-and-so and so-and-so to August 27th. There you go.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye. Good, yep. Michael? Okay, so we will see you on the 27th, hopefully. Thank you for coming. And everyone, thank you. This is a really long night. I hate to put off anything longer, but I think we all need to take a five-minute break just to run to the bathroom and sort of get a drink of water, and then we'll start right up. So it's about 9:28, so in five minutes, we'll come back. Thank you.
Wait, oh, Chris, you're fourteen.
Thank you, everyone. This is, this is a tough planning board light, remember?
Yeah.
Huh? Tornado, sharks, brutal heat. It's hella weak, I keep...
Are the lights in the screen going brighter and dimmer? Or is it this?
I think it's that. I think it's that.
So Jack, this shouldn't dig this this weekend? Or is this where it's going to be?
Oh. I don't think it's this weekend. Let's see.
And, and, and don't, what did you, what, what? What about, what about the potluck at your house? Wasn't that an motivation?
Have we had a potluck?
Potter?
I've, I'm not a big pot, I'm not a big potluck guy. But I'd rather just, I'd rather just... But, but, you know, it doesn't make sense. You bring a salad. Yeah, it'd be nice to share the pool and stuff like that. It's, it's, how do you watch your shit?
But you've got company, you've got company coming in. So that's kind of burned you.
Well, that's just, yeah.
That's going to burn you.
Well, that's a, that's a vacation thing. Double-stating is, oh my God. It is the same. Boy, did I complain, gosh.
Play golf, you know, Sunday morning.
All right. All right, we're going to start in a minute.
From what I saw?
Yeah.
Do you want to lift?
No, I want this. I got it, I got it. There's two of them there. I didn't realize there were two of them there.
Oh, well, thanks a lot.
This is the back. This is the counter back.
Yes, they do tell that. Thank God.
Nope, yep.
Okay.
Okay, two.
I wanted to just remind you that you do have a site visit report for this one.
And was that given to us tonight? Oh, God, let me, oh, there we go. Okay. Okay, so we're back on. Amherst Media, are you there? Okay. They're probably sleeping, no, I'm, um, okay, so, oh gee, it's way past seven fifteen. Thank you for waiting and your patience, everyone. We had a big night. It's a tough summer getting people to be available. Okay, so preamble three, here we go. In accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR twenty twenty zero one, SPP twenty twenty zero one, four sixty-two Main Street, Center East Common, four sixty-two Main Street. This joint public hearing to request a site plan review approval to construct a mixed-use building on the easterly side of the property containing sixteen dwelling units and one professional office space, including site improvements under Section three point three two five, to be co-located with the existing commercial building containing seven office spaces under Section three point three five eight, and in accordance with Section three point zero one, and demolition of the existing accessory building. Request special permit to extinguish special permit ZBA FY twenty eighteen oh eight, ZBA FY twenty oh, two thousand and five eighteen, and ZBA FY two thousand and four dash zero 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 three four, ZBA FY nineteen ninety-eight dash zero 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 two four, ZBA FY nineteen eighty dash zero 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 seventy-one, and any other special permits currently or previously associated with the site BN zoning district, map fourteen B, parcel sixty-eight. Okay, so the first thing I'd like to ask anyone, is there any board member disclosures? I see none. We'll move on to Section three, applicant presentation. Is it a long one? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You do what you gotta do.
No, 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 we will keep it brief. So thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Tom Reedy. I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson here in Amherst, here on behalf of four sixty-two Main and its application as the chairwoman mentioned. With me this evening is the manager of four sixty-two Main and also the property owner, John Robleski. We've also got his wife, Ann, who's in the back, and it's her birthday, but I wasn't going to mention it, but I decided to mention it.
Happy birthday.
Christine Royal is here, and she's our architect. And then we've also got Bill Osley, who is the civil designer. And so I think what we'll do is, I'll give this a brief overview of the project, talk a little bit about John, his history here in town, then I'll turn it over to Bill to talk about the site, and then to Christine to talk about the architecture, the layout, elevations, et cetera. And then we can start, we can talk a little bit about management, traffic, and anything else that the board would like to talk about. I think if I could draw your attention to the screen, what we've got just to, for a little bit of site context, this is four sixty-two Main. It was previously zoned general residence, but then it is now zoned neighborhood business. And so I think really what that allows is a project like this to come forward. So what you've got in front of you are two separate decisions. One is a special permit to eliminate all those previously issued special permits. And those special permits were issued because the uses were in the general residence zoning district, and those uses required special permits. But since the zone change to neighborhood business, no longer are special permits required for these uses. So the office use itself requires a site plan review, as does this mixed use. And so when you're, when you're looking at the project, it really is site-wide a mixed-use project. So what we have is that building on the left. It's an existing office building about twenty-four hundred square feet, supported by twenty parking spaces. And what you're going to hear about this evening is the proposal for that easterly sixteen residential unit with five hundred and fifty square foot office space on the easterly side of the building, supported by thirty-two parking spaces. And we can get into parking later. John owns High Street, twenty-two High Street, which has twelve units and I believe forty beds, supported by thirty-four parking spaces. He is a former Amherst police officer, came to town in nineteen seventy-one, and bought his first rental property in nineteen eighty-one, which I think seven thirty-four Main Street, which is a three-family that he and Ann still own. So it's that property, it's the High Street property, and then this would be that third property. And the proposal you'll see is for John to continue to manage this property as he's done with those other two. And just by somewhat high level, of those sixteen units that we're proposing, four of them are going to be one-bedroom, ten of them are going to be two-bedroom, and two of them are going to be three-bedroom. I think with that, I'll turn it over to Bill to talk about the site, and then we can start talking about the architecture and anything else that you'd like to talk about.
Good evening. My name is William Osley, O-S-L-E-Y, project engineer with Motte McDonald, an engineering firm in West Springfield. Our firm prepared the civil site design drawings for this project. And, okay, we got the, all right, the existing conditions plan shows the existing wood frame structure, two-story, and a garage in the back, associated paved parking, landscaping, lawn area, and some wooded area. This is all on a three-quarter acre parcel, and I guess we can go to the next plan, the proposed layout. This is the proposed layout plan. Now, you can see the proposed building on the easterly side of the, of the site. The setbacks are twenty feet from the easterly property line and twenty feet at the, at the rear. The, the proposed layout here shows the parking area in front of the, of the proposed unit. And their, and access to the, to the site would be via the existing driveway, eighteen-foot wide driveway from Main Street. So that will, the, the access really will remain the same. The curb cut will remain the same, but the driveway itself will be, the paving will be ripped up during construction and repaved, but essentially exactly the same place. All right. The wood-framed garage, you'll see, is missing from this plan because it's, it's proposed to be demolished. The, the other structure will stay the same. Sidewalks on the site would be concrete, all of them five feet wide, and in compliance with ADA specifications for, for slope. And sidewalks to the, the ground floors would all be in compliance with the Fair Housing Act as well as ADA, meaning that each one of the ground floor door, doorways is barrier-free. And you can tell by, if you look at the spot elevations, if you want to, you know, if you want to get into the weeds on what, you'll see that they're, they're, the grading is two percent or less. So it's, it all represents, you know, barrier-free, wheelchair accessible, accessibility. Parking lot will obviously be paved. It'll have Batum's berm at the perimeters. Parking spaces will be delineated by, by painting, by painted stripes, and handicap parking signs will be provided for each of the three handicap spaces. This is the, this is the grading plan. In, in grading the site and selecting the finished floor elevations, first of all, this, this proposed building will be on a slab. It will not be a basement. And we try to balance the, the elevations of the proposed building and, and the existing one. You can see that, if you look at the, there's a benchmark on the first floor sill.
Right.
At ninety-seven fifty roughly. And if you look at the elevation, the official elevations of the proposed, you'll see that we're, we're, they vary from ninety-six to ninety-eight. So averaging ninety-seven. We try to balance, to get the finished floors about the same. So visually, everything looks, from the street level, it looks, looks, looks balanced. This building is stepped, meaning the finished floors do, do grade from ninety-eight to ninety-six, and that's to take advantage of the general slope of the property. So it'll just minimize the amount of cut and fill. The, the grading in the parking lots will generally be between two to five percent, which is, which is reasonable. In the, in the back, on the north side of the, north end of the building, you'll see there's a grassed area, and there's a, a shallow swale that's shown. And that'll, that'll be to, to aid in the drainage around the, around the north end of the building. And it's carried around to the same way it does now. Suppose we talk about the overall drainage. No, keep it up there, the, keep it up at that one. Yeah, we'll get into the stormwater. But you can see how the site is graded from the northwest to the southeast. That, that's pretty much how it, how it's graded now. It's the existing, we try to keep the drainage, the drainage patterns as they are existing. And as far as the, for, for stormwater, the, the northern, call it the northern parking lot drains to a catch basin, but right, yeah, just, yeah, at the ninety-six. It drains, all that water drains to the catch basin, yeah, right by the island. And then there's another catch basin further down, a little more, right there. And that, that catches all the stormwater from the, from the parking lots. And from there, that, where the cursor is there now, that, that is a stormwater, uh, uh, dynamic separator, meaning it removes ninety, not quite ninety, removes eighty-six percent of the total suspended solids. And from there, it flows into detention basin. Now, it's a sub, that subsurface, it's essentially a large tank. And the runoff from the, from the proposed building roof flows, it's collected in gutters into pipes, and it's, goes directly to the infiltration basin shown. Now, the infiltration basin overflows into the detention basin, and from there, it goes to a outlet control structure and then into the, the town system. This is all in compliance with Mass DEP, Stormwater Management Policy Standards one through ten. The town, as far as we know, the town does not have a bylaw, a stormwater bylaw yet. I guess you're working on it. So we're, so we used, Jason Skeels recommended we use the DEP standards, which we did. And this was reviewed by Jason.
Yep.
We got feedback from, from Jason, right. But he had no problems with the, or issues. Now, we performed the stormwater, stormwater management using stormwater modeling software by, the name of the company is HydroCAD. It's very popular in the area. A lot of people use it. A lot of engineers use it. And all that was, is presented in our stormwater management report, which went to Jason Skeels for review. So essentially, this stormwater, the management system, has been, it's been designed to attenuate peak discharge rates, recharge the groundwater, and promote water quality per the DEP guidelines. Go to the utility plan. Yep, here. All right, the, the water and sewer for the building would be connected to the water and sewer at, at Spruce Ridge, which stated John, John Robleski owns it. So he is able to run the water from Spruce Ridge via the four-inch line and connect it into the mechanical room. And the same with the sewer can exit the mechanical room and tie it into the sewer system in, in Spruce Ridge, in parking lot. Of course, you'd have to have easements would have, would be created to allow for this connection to happen. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you were in contact with the water department to get this?
Yeah, I had a meeting with Gil, with Ann, Jason, you know, in the beginning of this process, and talked about the possibility of this, and they were very much in favor of that.
Oh.
Yep. And they were very much in favor of that because they said they had just done over Main Street, and this saves tying into anything on Main Street and cutting into Main Street. And it's a very, very easy thing to do because it's like eighty feet away from the current system on my other property there, and the water is literally ten feet from the property line there. We've done a flow test on High Street for the fire sprinklers back in May. The town water department was present for that, and I think the fire department letter kind of addresses that. So, yeah, it's all been with that, and okay.
Okay, thank you, John. As far as utilities, I think, oh, the only other utility that's, that's not shown here is the, is the electric service, the primary electric. That's going to run from, well, I guess it's up to the electric company how they're going to run it, but there's, there's a pole out on Main Street, close to the existing catch basin in the general area. Oh, it should have shown there. The pole is shown there, yeah, a little, yeah, just, right, so.
The overhead goes to the corner of the house. That's the telephone pole I saw today.
Right.
It'll be underground through the front yard over to the transformer.
Right.
Same thing with cable and telephone.
Right, right. But each one of those utilities would need to produce a, you know, plan for the contractor to follow. As far as I know, that has not been, you haven't, you haven't got any plans yet from?
We have a plan. I, I talked. I, I talked with both, um, cable and telephone and electric engineers, so.
And I think maybe just now is a good time to insert that John is looking at solar and he is looking at, uh, doing an electrical vehicle charging station. And I think you've already started talking to EverSource about that charging station.
Yes, I filed the application for, uh, two, uh, charging stations, and it'll probably be located, um, if you remember this morning, I pointed out those three shrubs that were on a corner where Jack parked. So those first spaces right in front of unit one off the corner of that building, right about there, to share those two parking spaces as charging spaces. And we talked about people that work there in the offices during the day, could you use them to charge their vehicles? And at nighttime, those people would be gone and share those spaces for the residents to use for charging at night.
Well, the other thing I guess I can address is the, uh, Erosion Sediment Control Plan. It's, we prepared, it's, I think it's the very last one. Yeah, yeah, that's it, all right. The, um, this plan will show you that, uh, uh, there's a construction, rock construction entrance planned, uh, for the driveway. And this is to remove any mud and dirt from, uh, vehicle wheels. That's shown with the heavy, heavy rock, um, hatching. And then on the, uh, south and east side of the building, there's, you can see there's a, a grid pattern that represents, uh, a jute matting. And that'll, that, once it's loomed, it's seeded, uh, this matting, it will be spread over, and it's pinned, it's pinned down to the ground. And, you know, it, it's, uh, it'll allow grass to grow through it, and, but at the same time, prevent erosion. And we have that, uh, there, and then at the northern, little northern part of, uh, yeah, the northern part of the site also, there, there is some, there is some sloping there. So we decided that that would, that would, uh, work. The catch basins, the one in the street and the two on the, on the, on the site, um, would be fitted with inlet filter bags. That would be to catch any sediment entering from a storm, you know, from storm runoff into the, uh, you know, into the catch basin. Uh, silt fence will be installed, it's, uh, shown there as an SF, uh, right along the, eastern, the southern and eastern, uh, property line at the toe of the slopes. It runs all the way up, um, yep, to partway up the slope, yeah, right, right to there. So, um, and that will be, um, a requirement of the contractor to, uh, install it and maintain it throughout the, uh, whole construction process. Uh, and the same with any of these erosion control devices, it's up to the contractor to, to maintain them.
And I think part of this would be part of the construction logistics plan, and while we don't have one now, we would accept the condition that we have to provide it, whether it's to the, uh, planning department or the building department, or to the board at a public meeting if you wish, prior to the issuance of a building permit. Uh, and I will note that Mr. Robleski has had discussions with the VFW across the street for contractor parking, uh, and he's got a letter to that effect that we're happy to submit for the record.
All right, yeah, the other thing I can address is the, uh, Long Term Operations and Maintenance Plan, or O and M Plan is called. Um, it's been developed by our office, and, uh, it was, it's part of the, um, uh, Stormwater Management Plan, or Drainage Plan. It's, uh, included in that plan as, uh, Appendix G. And that plan, what it does, it, it presents inspection and maintenance procedures, excuse me, you know, associated with the various, um, components of the system. And it's, and it's made for a long term. It's, it states the, you know, uh, how, how often the, um, you know, like the, the, uh, infiltration basin and the, uh, detention basin are inspected and maintained, and things like that. Uh, this, uh, it, it's required by DEP, so it, um, and it's, it, it'll be implemented. But that's something that, uh, that Mr. Robleski would be implementing and not the contractor. This is like after the site is stabilized and it's constructed, so. So there are two plans, there's the Erosion Sediment Control Plans, which is a contractor's responsibility, and there's a Long Term Operations and Maintenance Plan, that's, would be, uh, under the management of the facility.
I guess, I guess a couple of points, so, um, Jason Skeels has reviewed the plans, didn't have any comments. I think Beth Wilson looked at it from a Concom perspective and saw no need for any wetland permitting required here. So, I mean, with that, uh, we're happy to answer any questions about the site, if you've got them, or we can look at, um, the architecture and then the floor plans in use, given the time.
Yes, Chris.
I just wanted to note that we did receive, um, messages from the fire department today, and I think I emailed them to you. Unfortunately, we don't have them in our packets, but I believe that they were, um, you know, they didn't have any adverse comments about this project.
And we haven't received, uh, written confirmation from the town engineer.
I think there should be an email to that effect.
It's an email saying that he had reviewed everything and didn't have any comments. Meant, I sort of, um, what do you call it, paraphrased it in item number eight on page five of the development application report. The town engineer has reviewed the plans, traffic impact statement, and stormwater management plans, and has no comments or concerns. That was kind of a direct quote from his email, and I thought we had sent you the email.
Great, it might be in the pot. Great, just confirming, okay.
I've got the fire protection one as well, I don't know if you've got that in your packet.
I think we got, yeah, that one.
Received it via email, but I don't think we copied it for you.
Okay, yeah, there was no copy here. Double checking, 'cause we have double going today, so, oh, yeah.
And there's, there's two there, the first one was from June, and it identified a couple of things, and then the second one effectively shows the resolution of all of those things that were outstanding.
Does anyone want to look at these?
Yeah, basically what happened there with the fire department, um, they were unaware that a flow test was done. I guess I assumed that the engineer doing the flow test was going to notify them, but that didn't happen. So now with the new information that, you know, that the flow test was done and satisfactory and all that, um, he did the second transmittal today.
Makes sense. Well, we had a site visit today, so we're going to cover that first. We actually, if I can find that, um, yep, we have one here, uh, all five of us were here. Does anyone want to summarize this? Uh, it's pretty easy, since we have the report. Don't all volunteer at once. Don't make me do it.
I, I'll stumble through.
Just, just work, just, yeah.
Uh, at the site visit, we observed the existing, uh, building and, uh, and the garage and, uh, the area that was designated as a, like, uh, trash maintenance. Yes, uh, the extent of the parking lot, we looked at, uh, fencing along the, the west side of the property, um, because there was an email from the, uh, butter, we were looking at, uh, an HVAC unit, uh, uh, that was to the, uh, west of the building. And, um, got good perspective in terms of, uh, the architectural drawings and, and how the, the planned building, uh, would be set along the, the east side of the, of the property. And John did describe, you know, how the sewer and water was coming in from, uh, from his property to the east. And, am I missing anything?
Do you want to look at the questions?
Questions? And questions, who walks through the property, uh, of the land over, landowner to the west? Doesn't the fence prevent people from walking through? I guess that was a comment that they were worried about trespassers going through. And they were wondering about undergraduates, uh, as tenants, can they be refused tenants? Is this age discrimination? They are not a protected, uh, class of people, uh, was our understanding from Chris. So, and then are there apartments in the existing building? No, it's all professional. And, and then we talked about the trash room and where the door would be located on the east side of that addition. And who maintains the property? John, you, you, uh, hire out the landscape maintenance and, and snow plowing. Uh, what will be done to the existing sign? The existing sign will be kept, it's straightened out, it's a little bit, uh, out of pitch, so, uh, that's going to be corrected and, and painted, and a piece may be added to the top to show the property address. Will people be able to see adequately when they exit, uh, the site onto Main Street? The railroad tracks are close by, and there is a large amount of shrubbery that blocks the site distance to the east, and the response was the shrub, shrubbery will be cut back. And another question, should markers be installed at either side of the driveway to indicate where the driveway is located? This would help people entering and exiting to know where the driveway is, but might impede site distance. I forget what that was about, the markers?
Well, they can address it if they want to.
Yeah, okay. And can, can, can construction workers park at the VFW? And yes, that, that's going to happen. Is the number of parking places enough for the proposed uses? And, uh, the existing apartment development to the east that John owns has forty bedrooms and thirty-four parking places. The parking spaces, uh, are usually not full. Now, there are thirty cars that park there. In the past, the numbers have ranged between twenty-four and thirty.
Yeah. You, after, you can come back and say, yeah, I see what's wrong there, yeah.
Uh, question, where is the bike rack going to be? The bike rack will be next to the trash room, in a covered location. What is the structure in the front lawn? And it's an ejector pump for the sanitary sewage. The new building will be served by the sewer line that passes through the property to the east, so that will no longer be required. How will the new building get its utilities? The utilities for the new building will, will all be underground. And what is the material of the new building? And it's, uh, going to have vinyl siding.
Great, thanks. Um, yeah, if you want to clarify any of those, feel free.
Yeah, just on the, uh, the cars next door, that's backwards. Years ago, I had thirty, up to thirty cars there for the thirty-four parking spaces, then it's gone down over the years to twenty-seven, I think, two years in a row, twenty-five, and then last year and this coming year, it would be twenty-three.
Yeah, that, I recall you saying that.
Twenty-three, so if you could just fix that in there, great.
Yeah, so the average ratio of cars, actual cars, to bedrooms is about sixty-one point six percent.
Okay, um, so at this point to, thank you, to the board, I would propose that we break, this might be a good point to break and continue the hearing, but I do understand that there might be some questions that you're afraid you'll forget, or I don't know if this would get continued to the eighteenth, if someone will be here, mm-hmm?
You might consider hearing from the public that's here tonight.
Yeah, I'm going to do that too, right. But just the board was first, I was gonna, um, so, uh, if, if you do, I, I wanted to ask if any of you do have questions that you'd like to ask tonight, um, or are you willing to wait until the next hearing? Because what I was going to propose is that we hear from the public and let them do their thing, and then we can address anyone who has some questions. Okay.
And as long as we, if I could, as long as we could, if we're going to get continued, get a list of like homework, if there is such, just so that when we come back, hopefully that's the last hearing, with all due respect, the last hearing in front of you, and, and hopefully we can get approval then.
Okay, I think we have some things that, Chris, we already know about, um, I hear you, yeah. Okay, so, a show of hands, who here right now would like to ask a question, uh, or make a statement about this project? I, I see one, okay. So again, like the last time, if one of you could stay up here maybe, and, um, Ms. Pam, if you want to come up, I, that was the only hand I saw, but if, after she's done, if you have a question, let me know.
Dorothy Pam, two twenty-nine Amity Street. It's just a quick question about the possibility of a few affordable units. And I was looking at the bedroom plan on the first floor, which we've been told is totally handicapped accessible, there are two one-bedroom apartments. I just thought it would be very nice if those could be perhaps for a low-income senior. Just something to consider.
So if there's no more questions from the public, um, I'll come back to the board. Is there anything that anyone, well, and just to click, would this get moved to the eighteenth of September, or what are we thinking?
It would be up to you, you could continue to the twenty-seventh of August if you wanted to.
That's a full night though, isn't it?
But well, it would have the tree hearing and Mr. McCheese's project, and then this one. And you've already heard the presentation, so you'd really be working on conditions and findings.
You know, uh, you were maybe, maybe, I, um...
And if I understood it, Mr. Bert Whistle could not attend on the eighteenth.
Exactly.
But...
Do you have a preference to this? I mean, would you rather, no, you, on the twenty-seventh and, or is it okay if it goes to the eighteenth?
It's okay if it goes to the eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask, have you adopted the Mullins Rule?
Yes, we have. And there's two members who are not here tonight, who, if they're, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, I'm understanding that we will move this to the eighteenth of September. Do we have to have a time, or are we just, the nine? Do we already have a ti, what are we at?
We should say, um, seven oh five, because I think that's the first one on the agenda.
Okay, great, seven oh five?
Is there any way to get this on the, the twenty-seventh, I guess, given, so without hearing, what we have to come back with, given the long list that the previous applicant had to come back with, given the, um, how this fits into the neighborhood, we can get all into the reasons why? And I think just, uh, given the detail that Mr. Robleski had put forward to get to this point, um, I know that he was looking to break ground in September, um, and so a September eighteenth hearing would obviously push that timeline off, and, and I think is all you, you all know with construction, if we don't, if we get approved in September, or we don't start, who knows when the snow's going to start to fly and the ground is going to freeze, and when the plants are going to close, and so all of a sudden, you're talking about a spring start, which I don't know how long the construction's going to be, but then any, I mean, the lease terms here in town are a little bit strange, because they either go from May to May or from September to September, so, um, and that would be the request.
I hear you, all right. So, Chris, could we just run over, what do you have listed right now for homework or come back for them? I, I've been trying to scribble a few things, um, and if you see, you also gave me a list of, suggestions.
We did have a, um, development application report, so the applicant could go through the development application report and see what kinds of things were mentioned there, but if you want me to do that, um...
And a lot of them were, I mean, that I saw were conditions. I mean, there was one thing that suggested maybe if the fire department hadn't got back to you yet, to continue it before the approval, but the other ones I saw seemed that they could be appropriately conditioned, and we could just come back at a public meeting or submit it to the planning department or the building department prior to either, uh, the building permit or the certificate of occupancy, depending upon the type of condition that it is. And I mean, that would be the preferred method of doing it.
I could quickly run through the development... I could quickly run through the development application report and point out the things that I think are needed, and then I could quickly look through my notes if that's what you would like me to do.
Because I think what they're saying is they, they would rather do their work now and be ready. Yeah, which would be 27th. Can we do the 27th? Okay, we'll try, yeah.
How's the order go? I mean, because they, would they go first? Would it make sense for them to go first, or how's that work?
The tree thing, but.
You said the tree would go first, and then Amir, and then
because, right, we made a motion for them. We could go earlier, but I worry that if we, well, if we just run over, I mean, we could do a 6.
Could do it 6:00 or 6:30.
Do it 6:00, or you could put us at 7:10, and then, I mean, it's just the general time, so you start the tree hearing at 7:05, and then sandwich us in between before you take Mr. Michki again with his project after, you know, these are.
That'll be hard for my brain.
So Ms. McCowen. Just asked why we couldn't have a meeting in the beginning of September. I will be out of town in the beginning of September.
But you would be here at the 27th? Yeah. All right, so, because you also had given me this list of conditions, which are conditions, but it's more just, was there something that is like, oh, we, they need to?
Well, I noticed one or two things. There's a pad and a light shown at the rear of the building where the office is located. There's no door there, and I wondered if they, if they could clarify whether there's actually.
What page are you? Are you going through the?
I'm going to page three at the bottom of the page.
Okay, great.
The lighting plan
Yeah.
under issues to consider. Is there an exit there or not, and why do you need a sconce light and a pad if there's no exit? So that was one of the things. Then I think I
We've got a response to that if you want.
The photometric plan. They gave us information about lighting, but they didn't really give us a photometric plan, so that would be helpful, if they could do that. To confirm that the sign is not illuminated. To I guess, let's see. Submission of sample leases for commercial and office uses
All right.
and for residential use. Okay, let's see. So there were conditions on page five that I had suggested that be brought over from the special permit, and there may be some discussion about whether these are reasonable or not, but one of them was that the office building shall continue to be occupied only for business and professional offices as described in section 3.358 and 3.359 of the zoning bylaw, unless a special permit or additional site plan review approval is received for those other uses. That seems reasonable. The businesses shall not be conducted after 9:00 PM. That sort of keeps noise level down in the neighborhood. Exterior lighting shall be downcast and not shine onto adjacent streets or properties. The building in sight shall be managed in accordance with the management plan approved on X date.
And those, sorry, and those conditions would effectively extinguish the previous permits?
Yes, you don't, you could extinguish the previous permits and include those conditions in your site plan review, and that would be fine. And then the construction logistics plan. And what else? And then you need to make a finding that this, that the two buildings are clearly complementary to each other. That's something that you need to do. And then I can go through my notes.
Could I take a second to ask a question? I have these 20-foot setbacks. Would that give people space to barbecue and put some chairs? Does the slope prevent that, or? Just in terms like space on the, you know, place for people to hang out?
Well, Bill can correct me if he's still here. I think the slope that, the finished slope here, you see the dotted lines?
Yeah.
With the signing in 198, that's the existing slope, so you can see that the finished slope is going to pretty much mirror that. Mainly up in that corner. It gets a little steeper down toward the front where the stormwater is. Plus, there's about 2,000 square feet on the north end of the parking lot around that big tree and stuff. And they'll have that privacy fence along that north border. There are plenty of them near it, too.
And those grass, they are flat.
So you probably want to have a condition about the clearing of the shrubbery at the entry drive?
Yeah.
Can I talk about their rear exit and get that cleared up? I think I mentioned it this morning. That is no, it's not required. We are under the understanding here and just figured we needed a rear door on that office building, but the code does not require it. And the building inspector said, really, if you put a door there, where is it going to go? You know, so you might need a sidewalk and that type of thing, so. I mean, that building is only 25 feet wide, so that door has been eliminated, and it's now a window, so.
So eliminate that pad.
That pad is, yeah. And there's a light that was referenced outside there, too, and that won't be there.
And I guess maybe to further my argument, hopefully you can see the type of things we're talking about aren't necessarily that heavy of a lift, so if we're able to come back on the 27th and be towards the beginning, I think we'll have all of these things straightened out well ahead of time.
I hear you.
Thank you.
I'm trying.
Yes.
So you could do the, you could do this Main Street project first, and then do the Mr. McCheese's plan, and then the tree hearing after that. Because I haven't advertised the tree hearing yet, so the only one that's really been definitively scheduled was McCheese's continuation, right?
The only thing I'll just ask the board is, do you feel it's important if they have the tree settled? Which it isn't even fully settled at that point, because it goes to the town manager, but do you have any preference?
Yeah, I, it seems to me that the tree issue ought to be settled before we weigh in on the, on the site plan review. Because if the tree has to stay, the building has to be either totally redesigned or abandoned or something, it seems to me. And if the, if the tree is allowed to be taken down, we won't know that until the town manager makes a decision sometime after the tree warden and we have a hearing. Isn't that correct?
I think they're really, I think you can separate them. You could grant site plan review and conditional on the trees being allowed to be taken down by the town, allowed to be taken down by the tree warden, the planning board, and the town manager. I don't think that that needs to hold you up from doing what you need to do with site plan review.
Because no matter what way we decide about the tree, we won't know. Because is there a time period before the town manager has to weigh in, or?
He said he would try to attend the hearing, and so he would hear the testimony, and then he feels that he would be able to make a decision very soon after that.
I was just going to say, the amount of fill proposed in that area would, yeah, it would have to be. They wouldn't be able to just like cut out the building and have a spot for it. It would be a major effort, yeah.
So you're still proposing that we do this, and then the site plan review, and then do the tree hearing?
Yeah, because by the time, or
And start at 6.
Start at 6:00 or 6:30.
I agree. 6.
Thank you very much.
So. I don't think we did. We set a time for the lights.
We did, and I asked for, I don't know, we might, because I did ask, does that one have a time? I said, is it, do you have to have a time, and you said yes. We might have to go back to Amherst Media. How about, well, then we could create times now, and if we go look at the video, and if we did say a time, we can, we adjust.
You could do this at 6:30.
Do you think a half an hour is enough?
No, but it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Well, don't we think 7:00 and 7:05 and 7:10, like we had it tonight? Isn't that satisfactory?
7:00 for Main Street? 7:05 for trees? And 7:15 for Amir's second.
Yep. Yeah.
Are the lights in that, too?
No, that's the 18th. Oh, thank God. That'd be worse than tonight, no.
Main Street, 7 o'clock, trees at 7:05, Amir's second, and he's 7:15 on 27th.
We need a motion. I move to continue the, I'm hearing until, what was the date? August 27th.
At 7:00.
7:00.
7:05.
7:05.
7:00.
7:00, yes.
Okay, so it's 7:00. So it's 7:00, 7:05, and?
7:10.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion? And you're good with this?
Yeah, I mean, frankly, we would prefer 6, but if the board can't make it, just because we waited here tonight, and so we know what it's like when you get here at 7:15 and then wait till that time, so if folks are here at 7:05 for the tree hearing, which won't actually start until 7:45, if we take 45 minutes, and then Amir's thing starts after that, you might have people starting at 7:15 and hear until, you know, 9:00 before their hearings even. I feel comfortable that. You start ours at 6:00, we'll be done before that 7:05 tree hearing. And then everything there is Amir-related, if you will.
I know Janet and I were okay with 6. Chris, part, a lot of this leans on you. You're here. So how do you three feel about 6?
I prefer.
I prefer 7.
I'm good with 6.
What about 6:30? I feel like I'm like.
If everybody else prefers 6, I'll come at 6.
We get done earlier. All right, David, any feeling on?
I think that's great. 6 o'clock.
I know you were a maybe, but, you know, I didn't know.
It's okay for all of us to come at 6.
All right, as a Democratic thing, I think we're going to go with 6 o'clock. Thank you, Michael. Okay, second, and so that's what we're going with. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you. Is that your son, or, yeah, thank you. And happy birthday.
What a way to spend it, right?
There's so many flash drives that I don't know.
Oh. We'll have to look, spy on it.
That's probably Amir's flash drive they were using.
Oh, Chris, you might want to grab it. So I say we just hold at this point, and we move to adjourn. You want to?
Move to adjourn?
Yes. I'll, can I second? Somebody second. We're adjourning. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your patience.
We have an A and R.
Oh, we have to do, okay.
But I think it'll be.
All right, that's all right, so we're in hold right now. We're ready to vote. So, Chris, is there anything we have to do tonight? Okay.
So this is on, where is this? Bay Road. I think you've seen this one before, but you've seen it in a different format. It's Jeffrey Brown, who's an attorney in town.
Oh, yeah.
And his son have been making plans for their property. So I'm going to pass along a plan that shows what the property is like now, and then I will come around with a plan to show what they're going to be doing.
So, let's see, Bay Road is here. And what you're looking at there shows this property. Shows this property right here. What they're doing is they're taking this, that one. And they're taking a chunk out of it and adding it to this property here.
This came to us before.
Yeah, in a different form.
Okay, thank you.
And they're leaving this piece unattached. So they're going to have three unattached pieces, this one, this one, and this one.
I'm sorry, where's Bay Road again?
Bay Road is here. There is a house on this property. There's a house on this property. There's a house on this property. They're going to have to go through a special permit. No, they don't, they don't have. They will not have to do a special permit for a flag lot, because it's not a flag lot. It's got enough frontage on Bay Road. So all they're really doing is taking a chunk out of this big piece here and adding it to this to make visibility of the piece around it.
What are they planning to do on this, do they want to do?
I don't know. So what you need to look at is, is there adequate frontage and lot area?
There's adequate frontage for this parcel.
Yeah.
There's nothing for this parcel.
Nothing for this. So we can write on here, not a buildable lot. And this one already says not a separate buildable lot.
Okay.
But then this becomes a buildable lot.
No.
If it works with that.
No, there's no frontage on the.
They're separate.
What do they want to connect to this one? What piece do they want to connect to this?
This, these are two separate pieces.
Yeah, Jeffrey Brown's son lives here.
Okay.
Jeffrey Brown lives here.
Okay, I see, so they're connecting this to this?
Yes.
I got it, okay.
And I can write on here, not a buildable lot, because it's, it doesn't have frontage. And then if he wants to make it buildable, he'll have to do something else.
He'd have to restraighten this out and then get this down as a flag lot.
Yep.
And this is also, he'd have double flag lot.
Yeah, now you will see this again, actually, because his son came to us last week in mind about doing something different, but this is today's plan.
Okay.
So will you authorize the chair, the acting chair to?
Sure.
Yeah, if this is.
I'm sorry, just, can we just, the plan is to do what? Is to join, is to?
Is to take this property here, which exists.
Yes.
This line is not here. And to put this line there.
Yes.
And then take.